First date, May 21st, 2020. Patrick, please mute everyone. Regular monthly meeting of the DC Commission on Arts and Humanities. My name is Kay Kendall and I'm Chairperson of the Commission. When you hear your name, please answer "present." I'm going to do the rule call now. Alma? CC? Jose?
Here.
Thank you. Joseph? Mariah? Present. Back. Well, let's try to keep this quiet. Patrick, I hear a lot of extra noise. If I don't hear you answer the first time, I'll loop back at the end. There's still a lot of extra noise. Patrick, please mute everyone. You maybe need to mute yourself, Patrick. Joseph? Mariah?
Present.
Thank you. Mary Ann?
Here.
Jenna Duke? Jenna Duke? Edmund?
Present.
Rona? Rona? Stacy?
Here.
Kimber? Gretchen?
Here.
Derek?
Present.
Thank you. Nice? Cora? Natalie? Present. Okay, I'm going to loop back. Is Alma there? CC?
Yes.
Joseph? Jenna Duke? Rona? Rona was there, I don't know what happened. Kimber? Cora? Okay, I'm going to call these names. If your name is not called, but you are here, please... There is a... Patrick? I don't know whose ambient noise it is, but can you please mute everybody?
Also send a chat message on the bottom of the screen where those things are in case they cannot answer.
Yeah, there's a lot of the phone that I can't tell if some of those are commissioners.
Please mute them because they haven't answered. Just, I need to have a mute so I can hear. Okay. I understand that these people are present. CC, Jose, Mariah, Mary Ann, Edmund, Stacy, Gretchen, Derek, Juanice, and Natalie.
And I'm present.
And Kimber is present.
Okay. And Rona. Okay, that leaves Alma, Joseph, and Cora.
Hey, Joseph.
Alma, are you not there?
Alma looks like she's there.
Do you see it? Okay, well, okay. Okay, well, decorum is present. Today's agenda has been... It's still... I want to get to the bottom of this before I start the meeting so that we can all hear. Derek, there's... I mean, Patrick, there's no light. It's like papers being made, heavy breathing, something missed.
Okay, I'm muting the people now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Looks like Cora's here. Thank you, Natalie. Patrick?
Yes?
It's not quiet. I'm just... People are moving things all around. I really don't want to start this meeting until we...
Okay, do you have me present?
Who is that?
Wait, Mary Ann, Gretchen, CC, Cora, you have to mute your...
Rona? Rona, stop, Rona. I call the roll, I'm doing this. Wait, I'll take care of that. You don't need to call the name. The only people...
Muting.
Patrick, I do not know why you can't mute everyone. I see Alma, thank you. The only person I don't know who's here is if Joseph is here or not. At last is quiet. For a minute, okay. Today's agenda has been distributed. Is there any objection to the agenda as it stands?
This is Gretchen, I'd like to propose a change, please.
Okay, what?
I'd like to recommend that the committee reports come right after the director's report. The last time we did this, some people had to leave and the committee reports, especially the grants report, is a lot. It's a lot of line items that we really need to talk through and understand. So I'd like them to come in the front versus at the end.
All right. I'll call roll to see if everyone agrees with that change to the agenda. Alma? Alma, will you unmute for the purpose of saying yes or no?
I'm muted, so I don't know why.
Alma? All right, CC?
Yes.
Jose?
Yes.
Mariah? Mariah? Hi, Cora. Mariah, Mary Ann? Jenna Duke?
Yes.
Edmund?
Yes.
Rona? Stacy?
Yes.
Kimber?
Yes.
Gretchen? Derek? Juanice?
Here.
Yes.
Cora?
Yes.
And Natalie? Yes. Okay, thank you. The change to the agenda stands as adopted.
Okay, Joseph is on, just so you know.
The minutes of April have been distributed. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, the minutes stand as approved. This is a meeting of a public body held in open session in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. The meeting is being conducted remotely during the Cisco WebEx platform in order to maintain social distancing during the COVID public health emergency. Notice of this meeting with instructions for public access was posted on the agency's website. An audio recording of this meeting will be available for public inspection upon request. During the meeting, and please listen to this, all participants except for the speaker will be kept on mute to prevent interruptions. For discussion and vote, I will call on each commissioner individually and you will be unmuted to give your response. And when you're unmuted, please try not to move things around or make noise. Today, I want to take a moment. I want to thank Mayor Bowser. Our first glimpse at our budget for our agency for FY21 is in the $38 million range. While we cannot be sure those numbers will stay, and they may not, it is very reassuring to see such strong numbers as a starting point and a possibility. I want to thank the staff. They have been working extremely long hours under very trying circumstances and appreciate all that they've been doing. I want to especially thank the chairs of the two grants committees, Alma Gates and Gretchen Wharton. They have absolutely worked around the clock tirelessly to bring a thoughtful presentation to today's meeting. The focus of the agenda today is the budget for FY21. The money the agency will spend starting October 1st. The proposal on the table is the result of many thoughtful conversations and many scenarios have been considered along the way. The goal always has been to bring as much relief to our community as possible with funds that are flexible and impactful. We have eliminated certain cohorts for this next year. We are waiving matching grants when possible. We have reduced the budget in several of the cohorts. In all cases, we have done this so that we can create an emergency fund designed to meet needs that we cannot now yet determine. All of these changes are so that most of the funds can be in two groups, GOS and fellowships. Those two categories will give the most flexibility to grantees. You'll be hearing more about this under the grants report. Now, our last meeting was a bit chaotic. I know we're all getting used to this new way of getting together, so I hope we think of decorum and try not to speak over each other or make noises that disrupt other people. I appreciate that. Today, we do have some members here from the public. Yes, there are some individuals that are joining us by phone for the public comment period. I'll call on each of those who signed up to make remarks in turn. They'll each have three minutes to speak. First, I'm calling on JR Russ.
Okay, so he's unmuted now.
My name is JR Russ. My pronouns are he, him, his, and I'm grateful to be able to provide public comment to you today. For those of you who may not know me, I'm a lifelong DC resident who grew up just two blocks north of Arena Stage. I've worn many hats over the decade and a half. I've worked in the local creative sector since finishing my undergrad at College Park. I've been a Sinetic Theatre Company member, Adventure Theaters production manager, and a story district board member. My passion for storytelling turned into an ongoing program, which is featured performances from Capital Fringe to Black Rock City. And I've been a member of the community arts team for Any Given Child DC. I serve on the Board of Dance Plays. I'm on the Grants Committee for the Arts and Humanities Council of Montgomery County and volunteer as an ambassador for Woolly Mammoth. I am also a member of the current cohort of the Wilders Playwriting Collective and serve as one of five regional contacts for the DC Burning Man community. The art sector is being decimated by COVID-19, as you all know, and this was a headline from last month on Inside Philanthropy. As arts organizations attempt to balance short-term solutions with long-term planning, this global pandemic shines a light on well-known inequity within the art sector itself. "The economic fallout of the virus has made the disparity between employed workers and independent contractors clearer than ever," wrote Emily Whitford in an article in The New Yorker "about the financial fallout of the coronavirus and its impact on performing artists." And this disparity is one that exists across disciplines. So how can equity be centered in the decisions individual artists and arts administrators are making? What can we do to prevent DC from becoming a cultural wasteland, a fear that artists in the UK expressed in their own area in a letter regarding the need for UK government to support its artists? The answer is clear. By making sure the DC Commission on the Arts and Humanities provides as much relatively unrestricted support as possible to DC artists and arts organizations. Bold leadership is needed from the DC Commission to be able to support what was a thriving arts community and sector, allowing arts organizations the ability to be nimble and responsive to their needs, not just for the remainder of FY20, but FY21 as well. This funding flexibility will be critical for individuals and organizations to recover, especially as they will still be impacted by the effects of physical distancing for at least the next year, if not longer. As a former DC Commission staff member, I understand the amount of planning that goes into each grant cycle, so I make this ask knowingly. As a lifelong DC resident, I've never wanted to move to any other city because of its creative class and artistic opportunities. And Washington DC has an opportunity to lead by example locally, regionally, and nationally. Listening to what the community needs and providing that is what is called for, especially the needs of individual artists who are the lifeblood of our creative community, because this cannot be the time for business as usual with the hope that things will return to some semblance of normalcy beginning in October. It won't. And DC artists and organizations deserve nothing but equitable support during a year FY21 where it will be needed more than it is now. And it's wonderful to hear that your current grant proposals being considered for this meeting are in line with that. So thank you.
Thank you, JR. I really appreciate you taking the time to come and talk to us. That was really very moving to hear from you. Next, is it Angel Rose or Angel Rose? You're up. Is... Patrick, are we about to hear from Angel Rose? I'm not sure how to pronounce the first name.
I've unmuted the people on the phone, so if... I don't know which number they're dialing in from.
I understand.
So they should speak up now.
Well, perhaps then they're not here. Okay, I'm sorry. We'll move on. Next is the director's report. Huron?
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm hoping you can hear me.
We can.
Okay, good. A few brief updates in general, and I'll jump into the FY21 budgets in a bit more detail. The Mayor Bowser has, as you've already heard, extended the state of emergency and public health emergency for DC through June 8th. As of just a few minutes ago, Jeff forwarded some news that the opening of DCMA actually starts sooner. So we're keeping our ears on the ground for that. But reopening might start as soon as the... As the end of this month, as May 29th. So we're keeping an ear to that, but up until we're told by the city administrator, CAH staff is working remotely. Our updates for the CAH NEA Coronavirus Aid Relief Economic Security Cares Act grant is that the application period has closed. It was open for a week. As you remember, the agency has received $421,300 as relief support for the district's arts and humanities organizations and practitioners. We received over 500 applications from individuals and about 59 applications from organizations. The commission grants team and public arts team members are vetting those applications now. They're reviewing them. The interesting news is that we received over 61% of applicants that are completely new to the commission, which is really good news and exciting news. We're already thinking of ways to engage them and bring them into the fold with our grant-making processes. We're already thinking of ways of doing that and what that might look like. The allowable uses of this fund are to mitigate COVID-related losses and the admin support and salary support, general operating support for organizations. We've received additional information from the National Assembly of State Arts Agencies and the NEA indicating reporting requirements. And mainly, it's that the, you know, policymakers and the public would like to see that these dollars have made a difference in relief funding. And so we will be able to demonstrate that with the reports. As it relates to our FY21 budget, as you know, on Tuesday, the mayor presented the DC District-wide budget to council. And this includes a proposed budget for CAH at $38.7 million, which shows a 10.6 increase over the approved budget for the current fiscal year. Our legislative guidelines stipulate, as you may know, that from beginning in this coming year, in fiscal year 2021, and every fiscal year thereafter, that the commission allocate not more than 23% of its annual budget for administrative costs and not less than 77% of the annual budget for purposes that are related to grant-making. This is, in 2021, is the first year of implementing these thresholds. And the way that, you know, our agency budget is built is looking at current year allocations. So in FY2020, we also had allocated 80% of the total budget to grants and 20% to admin costs. And so the breakdown would work out for FY2021, 80% of $38 million is about $31 million. And just to provide some context, in FY2018, it was $23.6 million. In FY2019, it was $26.3 million that was available for grants. And so this is what we went forward with in FY2021. As Kay mentioned, this is an unexpected surprise, just given how, you know, a whole lot of DC government budgets and the economy in general has been impacted by the pandemic. You might be able to see from the budget book that's been presented that the local funds line of the agency budget has been completely zeroed out. That line supported nine full-time staff positions and some programs as well. So those full-time employees are now being supported by the dedicated taxes line, which comprises the majority of our budget. In addition, you might see that the Arts and Humanities Field Trip Experiences Program, which was also supported by the local funds line, has been transferred over to the Office of the State Superintendent to be managed by them in FY21. So I would say that the three main points to keep in mind is that this is a proposed budget and it is based on forecasted revenues. So we have to keep in mind that the money is being collected periodically over the year. And our budget authority just shows the forecasted revenue amounts. Also, as we all know, this is an initial budget. It is subject to revision by council. And so the final product in the end might look very different than this originally proposed budget. And the last piece of... What we have to keep in mind is that, you know, if the COVID outbreak comes back around again, that there may be business closures and other adjustments as requested by the mayor. The next several weeks, council committees will be conducting these budget hearings for the agencies. Our budget hearing is scheduled to take place on Friday, May 29th. The timeframe we were given was from 12:00 to 1:00 p.m., but that may be changing. Public witnesses are invited to participate. And there are not a whole lot of people signed up yet, from what I understand. So the deadline to indicate that you would be serving as a public witness is this Friday. So if anyone on the call is interested, please look into coming in for a testimony. Coming in, I mean, virtually, it's all on a virtual platform, but becoming a public witness by this Friday. I will stop there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next on the agenda now is the committee report. And they start with...
Hi, can you hear me? Do we have questions for Huron?
Absolutely, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Joseph.
Hi, Huron. I just wanted to know about the NEA Cares grant funds that were just released. Is there, like, a reason why the commissioners were not shown the RFP before it went out or told that it was only going to be open for four days?
There's... The understanding I had was that we were going to move it very quickly, move it forward very quickly to get the money out the door. And so the way that we could do that was to create the guidelines from the discussions that the grants committee had had and the full commission had had on deciding award amounts. And so the timeline was set up so that it could move quickly.
Again, why weren't the commissioners told? Why weren't the commissioners told that it was going to be reported? And my point is, you know, clearly, people from the community... My point being that it's, you know, commissioners who are the points of contact in many cases in the community. And, you know, we weren't told how long the applications were going to be open. I would have personally suggested we don't have it be four days. You know, I'm also just curious to know why we weren't shown the RFP before it went out.
There isn't some practice...
There was a survey.
Oh, I'm sorry. Joseph, I'm sorry.
My other point was that there was a survey that went out that we also didn't get a chance to review. And that survey did not clarify a lot of context around the COVID-19 pandemic. And I'm concerned that it may have skewed some of the results that we got back.
The survey had to do with the FY21 formulation of the grants programs, I believe. And that was shared with the grants committee and maybe even wider with the full commission. The survey is separate than the NEA. But the NEA, I can provide you with a detailed list of other state arts agencies that have opened the NEA application timeline for a week. Even the NEA itself had their relief funding open for a week, the application period open for a week. So there wasn't any... There wasn't, you know, this wasn't out of line to have the application open for a week.
I guess my question is just, you know, I would have liked to have seen us be informed of this, just as a matter of process happening, and we weren't. And that's the bigger point that I'm trying to make. The other question I have is regarding this agenda for today's meeting. Who was responsible for putting that together?
I guess I was, Joseph, based on the business at hand. If there's something that you don't... That you want on the agenda that isn't, it can always come up under new business.
Well, no, no. It's my question is, why do we have the finance report not included with the committee reports on the agenda? And there was a vote that was just forced that has us giving the committee reports the readings and the votes before we hear what's going to be included in the finance report. So I want to know who did this.
Well, just a few minutes ago, it was... Yeah, it was suggested that we change the agenda, the order of the agenda.
I really wanted... The reason is that I wanted everyone's attention to be on the committee reports. The last time, they're so in-depth and so many lines...
Why is the finance report not included with the committee reports? This seems like a very shrewd manipulation of an agenda and a vote.
No, no, this is the way Robert's Rules would have it set up, that committees go together, finance stands alone. This is not... That's not created by me.
This is brand-new, Kay. This is a brand-new interpretation of Robert's Rules. We have long included the finance committee as part of the committee report. I see what you all are doing, and I think it's, you know, you and Jeff and collusion, Kay. And what you've done is straight-up manipulation.
Joseph? Whether it says finance report or committee report, there's an opportunity for... CC is chair of the finance committee to make a report. There's no collusion. I don't even know what you mean by that.
Why, what does... So she was originally supposed to be giving her finance report first in the order of the agenda. And now you all have decided that you're going to manipulate this and say, since her item on the agenda is not included formally in the committee report, now she has to wait until we've... After we've already voted on what we're going to do with these recommendations being presented by the committee report. She's offering, as part of her finance report, a new recommendation that this commission should...
Joseph, that would not be appropriate for a finance report. That would be... That wouldn't be appropriate. That's not what the finance committee talked about. That wouldn't have anything...
You were really trying to collude on this, Kay, but you ought to be ashamed of yourself.
Joseph, wait. Gretchen, Gretchen, let me say this. The fact is that if there's a finance committee report, it's supposed to be on what happened at the finance committee. And she will have a chance to make that discussion when her time comes.
I'd like us to call us back to where we are in the agenda, which was questions for Huron on her director's report. So if there's additional questions, we should be able to ask those, and then we should move forward on the agenda as it's been voted on.
I think that's right. So, Joseph, you asked Huron questions. May we move on from that? Okay, next is the committee reports, and it starts with public...
I'm sorry, I had a question, Kay, for Huron. Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead. So my question is about the May 29 public hearing on the budget. I wanted to find out when the finance committee will be able to review that in advance of it going to May 29. So when can you get it to the finance committee so we can review what the budget is? The proposed budget, so that we can have input on that.
The budget is what's posted, the proposed budget is what's posted in the budget book. The thirty-eight made public by the mayor.
So the third, so you're going to testify on the thirty, on May 29 about this new budget? And so you're gonna, so what is, what is it that you're going to be sharing with them at that May 29 hearing?
They're going to ask questions about the budget, and I'm going to respond. The commissioner, questions.
So you have ideas on how to spend the FY 21?
The ideas are listed in the budget book. Those are the ways the money will be spent. It's already looked into budget book. So when they ask questions, that's based on the published budget.
So they're going to ask you questions on what the mayor's recommendations are?
Questions, they'll, you know, go into the budget book and say, why this, why this increase, why this decrease? So I'm preparing to answer those questions.
Okay, so I guess my question is, when would you meet with the finance committee? So when would you be meeting with the finance committee about that?
I will not be meeting with the finance committee. I'll be preparing. I'm sorry. I will not be meeting with the finance committee. I'll be preparing to respond to council's questions in my role as Acting Director of the Agency next Friday.
Okay, so I think this kind of comes to some of the other questions that we have. And why I do think that is important to hear from the finance committee is that, you know, before we sort of get into the weeds about what grants are going to what, like, we have some basic questions about how this budget keeps going up and down. And and so, you know, I think that it would be very useful for us to, you know, make sure that the finance committee is involved in any decisions about whether to pause, you know. We paused all operations for the Arts Commission back in March, based on some budget numbers that didn't turn out to be exactly, they didn't actually come out to be what was projected. And so I wanted to just find out and just hear from you, Huron, and also you, Kay, like, what role the finance committee will be in sort of making any decisions about pausing the agency's operations. And then now that we're restarting, like, we're, you know, the finance committee needs to have a role in that. So I just wanted to, you know, make sure that we're on the record so that we can talk about that. And because it just seems to be like we're, we're jumping right from, you know, we were spending the last few meetings talking about the fact that there is no money and we might not be able to pay staff to now we are, we're talking about, actually, we have thirty-eight million. And so it just seems like the finance committee, and again, I'm new to it. You know, I'm just trying to figure out where it's coming in the mix. And I just want to get some assurances from you that we will be part of any sort of like macro decisions about how this agency goes forward or doesn't go forward.
Actually, Natalie, I don't know that I can give you that insurance because this budget is determined between the council and the mayor. And we respond to it and we report to our fiscal officers. And so the finance committee can report to the commission. What is happening is they learn it, but they don't determine it. And every year, every year, there is a budget hearing that's been going on forever. It happens every year at this time. And in that time, there's a discussion about the budget proposal that the mayor has put on the table. The council asks questions about it, and then they decide if they want to make changes to it or not. So this is all happening on its own. It's not determined by a finance committee.
Well, some, there, there were determinations that have been made since March. And the finance
They were made well, everybody
Trying to get clarity. So, you know, I think especially as we're moving into becoming an independent agency and figuring out what that is, I mean, I think that there, there needs to be sort of a clear, there needs to be some sort of layer of
Be as clear as I can. Be as clear.
An input from the commission beyond us reporting what the numbers are. I mean, we're here to give input on what the policies are for the agency. And so I guess what I'm saying is that, you know, moving forward, because again, before the sky was falling, and apparently, you know, great news, the sky is falling. So now we have a really good opportunity to move forward in a way where commissioners have a role sort of setting the macro policies on what what is happening, of how the agency is moving forward.
I think the one place that we can set a policy is how we do spend the money that we've got. And that's how we do decide how to get grants out, which is what the next conversation is about, supposed to be about today.
So grants are one thing, but I'm talking about the whole agency. So
Agency isn't for us to determine as commissioners. That budget is not for us to determine as commissioners. It's, it's pretty much preset.
How it's spent, I'm not talking about what the budget is. I'm talking about how it's spent and whether
The only part that we have say on, the only part for us to have a say on in how it's been is the grants question.
So what I'm saying is that there is a missing step. And so that's something that needs to be addressed because again,
You can address it so much.
The whole thing about this, okay, and I just need to say this, and then we can move on. All right, decisions were made. The fact that you say we're freezing everything, we're not moving forward, but yet you were, we were continuing to move forward and funding all the people we've been funding all along. Right? Those are actually policy decisions that were made, and I'm not really clear on who made them, you know.
Fiscal officers made. We had a special meeting with our fiscal officer just to tell us the reality. It was made for us. It was made by
No, it wasn't, Kay. That was, that was not a decision that was made by the government. And this is why you had to forward out Jeff's email last time before you deleted his contact info, remember? Like, this was a recommendation. This was a record, this is for, we're still in, we're still in the discussion. There was a recommendation that was made by the OCS, okay, that was ultimately proven wrong.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have you muted. Patrick, please, we're gonna have to mute this conversation. This is off the agenda. We have an agenda to cover today. And if you all want to bring this up under new business, that's fine, but we're way, way off subject. And the reason we moved Gretchen up to the top and Alma to the top was not to get into something like this before everybody was exhausted and left the meeting like happened last time. So I'm going to go back to the agenda. I'm calling on Alma, who is a public art programming proposal to make. Alma and Natalie, I'll get back. I know this is a concern to you. I've heard from you before. I do want to discuss it with you. It's hard to go round and round about this. I want there to be some understanding. I'm not trying to push this under the rug or away, but right now is not the right time.
Year 2021 Public Art Programs. The Public Art Committee recommends the commission adopt the following resolution in regard to FY 2021 Public Art Programs. Result that the public art programs and their respective budget allocations for fiscal year 2021 shall be as follows. Art Bank funded at 1.1% Total Dedicated Tax Fund Arts and Humanities Grant Budget with the maximum award limit of $10,000 per piece and per applicant. Two, Art Exhibition Grant funded at 0.2% of Total Dedicated Tax Funds Arts and Humanities Grant Budget with the option for funded exhibitions to be either onsite at CAH's gallery, off-site, or virtual. Three, Public Art Building Communities funded at 2.1% of the Total Dedicated Tax Fund Arts and Humanities Grant Budget with the maximum award amounted for business improvement districts reduced to 150,000 and an optional one-to-one financial match for all organizational grantees. Four, Art Conservation funded at 0.2% of the Total Dedicated Tax Fund Arts and Humanities Grant Budget. Five, Civic Commission Program funded at 0.2% of the Total Dedicated Tax Fund Arts and Humanities Grant Budget. The Public Art Committee met via WebEx on May 18 with the quorum of the committee being present and unanimously the affirmation of the recommendation above to the commission as originally presented at the April 30, 2020 Full Commission Meeting. The committee noted that public art grants are significant cultural assets for the district. They provide investments in individual artists whose works are included in a permanent collection and add to the district's aesthetic infrastructure while providing sustainable works for artists. A single grant award can fund the creation of public artwork that may exist in a community for many years, becoming a part of that neighborhood's identity and character. The committee further noted that the Support for Art in Public Places Amendment Act of 1986 assigns the creation, installation, and maintenance of public art as a responsibility of the commission. For the commission to not continue its support of public art in the district would be tantamount to an abandonment of the agency's legal duties and responsibilities.
May I have a second to your proposal?
Second.
Okay, I'm going to call on everyone to see if there's any discussion, and then going to call on everyone again for their vote. I'll start with Edmund. Do you have any questions about Public Arts Proposal?
I do not.
Chenadu, do you have any comments?
I, I, I am satisfied with, with the way that it reads.
Okay, good. Mary Ann?
I don't have any questions.
Mariah? Joseph?
I have a question. How can public art be deemed essential during a pandemic?
I would guess that it's because it supports artists, and that's one of our goals. Would you want to comment on that further, or would Chenadu want to comment on it? You're on the Public Art Committee. You're an artist. Chenadu, do you have any comments?
You can come up to Chair, Kay. Alma, this is Alma's recommendation. I'd like her to answer this question.
That's fine. I'll let her do it, but I just, other people are on the committee that voted on this recommendation. So I thought they might want to also address this. Alma?
I think that Art Bank is every bit as important as all the programs of the commission, the grant programs, and we are
No, my question, my question is, how is this deemed essential during a pandemic?
Well, I think that's a very subjective answer, our question, but
What's your answer, Alma?
Why wouldn't it be deemed essential when
You can't, you can't do my question to my question, Alma.
Excuse me, will you let her answer? Stop interrupting her.
Okay.
Yes, Alma was trying to answer you, Joseph.
I have a question, Kay. I'd like a real answer.
I've given you a real answer, Joseph.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's a, that's a weak answer. So my other question is, why, why is it that you think we should be maintaining, we should be increasing the public art budget when every other grant program is taking a decrease?
We are not increasing the public art budget.
Are we making any cuts to it?
Yes.
How many, how, what's the percentage of cuts, and how is that comparing to other grant programs' cuts?
I don't have this year's budget in front of me. However,
You're the Chair of the Public Art Committee, and you don't have this information, but you're offering a recommendation. What is, what is your recommendation based on?
Mary Ann, wait. Lauren is on the phone, and she may be, I mean, on the call, and she may be able to answer that specifically, Joseph, but there were cuts to the whole, the entire public art proposal.
I want to know, what are the cuts relative to?
To last year's budget. Many of the things are cut
No, 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 we're talking about FY 21. What percentage of a decrease is public art taking? And I want to know how that compares to other grant programs being cut.
Wait, do you want public art across the board, or do you want just Art Bank?
I want to know everything that you're including in this recommendation for funding, so whatever programs you've listed.
I just read them, Joseph.
I'm not asking you what you read. I'm asking you the percentage of decrease to those budgets.
What, what program has any decreases? Can you tell me that?
I couldn't hear, what was that question?
The question that I asked is, and this is Brian speaking, from the information that you had before you, can you tell us what programs have sustained any cuts in 21's budget? I'm listening.
What programs are cut? I still can't hear you.
Brian, can you just repeat that question a little lower?
Okay, can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. The question that I asked, I'm asking Joseph to please outline to us what program has sustained any cuts in 21 from 20, fiscal year 20. Tell me which ones that you know of any cuts.
We just went over this in the Grants Committee. We were looking at the different grant programs that would be cut, arts education.
I'm sorry you're not answering the question. You asked Alma to answer the question. I'm asking you, sir, respectfully.
She has She has in her recommendation, the Art Bank, the Art Exhibition Grant.
Wait a second. Joseph, Joseph, I think the, what's behind your question, you're trying to see how proportionately public art is taking a hit on the budget so that
Exactly.
Yes, I understand. And for instance, I know that when we used to have two curatorials, it went to one. If, if Art Bank used to give X number of dollars, they're giving less. Every single program was cut, 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 and cut to the point that it was really put on maintenance only. I mean, I know they gave percentages. I'm giving you a general statement. I think anyone would have to do a little math to answer your question precisely off the cuff like that. I don't know that that answer.
I can answer the question off the cuff if people would like. I can answer the question for Alma.
They see, all is called upon.
Okay.
We do not have a copy of the budget. That was not presented yesterday at the Finance Committee. So I have no frame of reference, Joseph. I'm telling you that there were severe cuts made to Art Bank. We've limited the number of being awarded to artists, plus the fact that that includes the number of pieces that one artist can sell. The Art Exhibition Grant was cut.
Respectfully, Alma, that information is actually not accurate if you look at the budget that was given to us. Your budget, or not your budget, excuse me, the DC Public Arts Budget actually increased from $940,000 in last year's proposal to this year is 1.231 million dollars. The Lincoln budget went down a little bit from 150,000 to 137,000. Art Bank remained the same. I'm looking at the mayor's proposed budget for FY 2021. So, and to answer
That is not what we base this on. That is not what this is based on.
Your recommendations are based, what, so you're not basing Your recommendations are based, what, so you're not basing your information on the budget that we are given from the mayor? Is that what you're saying?
They were based on last year.
Is Lauren, did Lauren or Ron want to address this specifically? Lauren might be on the call and she may have to.
I'm on the call. So in general, our charge initially, when both grants and public art, we're looking at our budgets, the, the charge was to look to see what we might be able to do with the prospect that there may be a reduction in the budget overall for twenty one. This was based on information that was provided to us that we all heard from the mayor that there is expecting this major shortfall in funding for district agencies. So we went through this exercise to see how we would manage our programs if there was a reduction in funds. I would like to point out that all of these programs existed when the agency had less money and all of these programs moved forward. All of these programs support artists. Artists want to have sustainable work. And all of these programs do that. As far as how things move forward in a pandemic, we know that the mayor is talking about opening up the city very shortly. And construction is considered an essential service. None of our grants for two, from two thousand twenty have been canceled. All of the artists are completing their obligations and actually looking to do things very unique, doing things virtually. Doing community outreach and engagement virtually and, and they can actually fabricate their work. And the installation will happen as scheduled based on the availability of public space and most of the work is going in public space. So work is going forward. It's going to continue to go forward and artists want to have sustainable work to add to their repertoire. Which is what all of these public art projects do. And as well as all the grants that are across the agency, particularly those going to individuals, those funds help those artists to practice their craft and build onto their reputation and their repertoire as, as artists. And we should be championing that.
So another question I have then is since we've heard from artists at previous meetings who have told us things like, you know, they're not able to buy supplies. They're not able to pay rent on their studio spaces. How is it that you think they're going to be able to create work in the middle of the pandemic in order for it to be sold to the, the DC government?
Well, many of them are already working. And certainly there are the fellowship grants that can also support that. If you submit for a, for instance, a public art building communities grant as an artist and it is selected. Part of that funding goes to supplies. The same thing is for all of, all of the arts with, all of the grants with the exception of Art Bank, which is based on existing works. That the artist is offering to be part of a very unique collection, which is a tremendous asset. We have so much interest from district government agencies. They're always asking for more work. And we're always looking for new and fresh work to add to the collection. So when we stopped.
How much of our, Lauren, how much of our work is in storage versus out in public view right now?
Most of the work is in public view. The, what's in storage now, well, what, what we have now is stuff that we just recently acquired. That's in the process of being framed and we have mounting requests. We've even had requests during the shutdown for, for artwork to be installed in their offices when the city opens up, when the district offices open up.
These questions have nothing to do with the proposal that is on the floor and I. They actually are.
Marian, I think, Marian, you need to shut up.
No, you need to.
No, 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 everybody stop. Patrick, Patrick, please mute everyone.
You're not running up and let her talk.
Patrick.
I'm going to have to start muting people.
Please mute everybody.
I am learning something from her.
Hold on.
Patrick, mute everybody. I want to just say that I think Lauren.
The fuck do you think you are?
Marian, Marian.
I am sorry. I'm sick of this.
But Patrick. You've got to be muted. This is what we really need to avoid. Now, I personally think that Lauren was giving terrific answers. She was explaining wonderful things about the public art and why it's important. And that was probably pertinent to education before we have this vote. I think we've heard a lot. We're going to move on. I'm going to ask if anyone right now has any other discussion, I'm going to call for a vote.
I have a very simple question. So I'm just looking at all these totals. This is three point eight percent of the total budget, DCAHC budget, right?
Okay. I'm not looking at that, but I guess so. Yes. Okay.
I have a question, Kay.
Yeah?
I'm sorry, before you go to the vote on the actual public art percentage, is that, is that included? Because your program or, you know, the public art program is unique in in the way that it's done, that it has a lot of support contracts to it. It has requirements that are in an inter-district agreement that must be maintained in terms of the art, the murals throughout the city and things of that nature. So that's why you'll see some of the increases in the budget for public art or art building communities, program three thousand is going there. It's going to places where we haven't funded in the past. We funded a lot of things like events. But there was some neglect going on with these arts that are throughout the city. So they have to be maintained.
Brian, Brian, I think this is actually confusing a little bit. For me, it is. It's, it's, there are percentages in this public art. They've been reduced. Everything is less than it was and we need to decide if we're going to go forward with it for the reasons that Lauren so articulately said.
Are you still asking questions, Kay?
I haven't, I haven't had, Kay, you asked for a discussion. I haven't said anything. Rona can go on and say what she has to say.
Yes, I'm waiting to see if anyone else has a question.
Let me just say one thing as we move forward. Lauren's discussion was very helpful and I was learning a lot from it. And I think this commission would be well served if we put more oxygen into discussions. Because that was an education for me. That made me, helped me understand where we're, what we're doing, where we're going. So I was really, I'm really sorry that got interrupted because I was, and I would, I would like to respectfully request the other board members, when you speak up, to give a little bit more detail because I think it makes a difference in terms of decisions you make, the voice, the votes and the understanding that you're informed. I know I know less than everyone else, but I think everyone can be well served by a healthy discussion so that we can have some understanding and maybe at some point some consensus. So I appreciate what Lauren did and thank you. Now, Rona, I'm sorry, you can go.
Cora, I agree. I thought that was very helpful discussion. Rona, did you have a question?
For Lauren or for Alma, it doesn't matter. So what you're telling us is that from last year to this year, the arts public art budget was cut, right? Last year meaning what? You're talking about fiscal year twenty to fiscal year twenty one? Is that what you're talking about? So I think one of the things, just, this is just my humble opinion, but we just got the fiscal one, fiscal twenty one budget on Monday. All of this, all this work that was done was projecting how we would distribute the money once we knew what the budget dollars were. So we have not, I mean, we met a half hour before the mayor presented her budget. So we had no idea what she was putting forth, nor did the grants team. None of us did. We were all creating these percentages so that when we knew what the amount was, this would be an equitable way to distribute those dollars across the grant programs that needed to go forward. That was the concept behind it. There were no dollars attached to it. So it wouldn't have mattered whether it was thirty eight million that we had or whether it was twenty five million that we had. It was, this would be a way to distribute the funds responsibly to continue the programs of this agency, which is our core business and to be able to continue to support artists in the arts community. So in many ways now people are asking us to compare the twenty one budget that was just released on Monday to what we did last year, which is not what these, these projections were based upon. They weren't based upon a specific number. It was just a way to be able to distribute the dollars once we knew what the, what the numbers are. If that, if that, I don't know if that answers your question, but. It does. That's very helpful. Thank you. I just wanted to get a better perspective. Because some art, some grant programs were cut a little bit and some weren't. And I was just trying to see the comparison. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, I'm gonna, I think I'm going to go down the roll call now and ask for a vote.
Oh, wait.
Did you have something to say?
I had a question. Um, I would really like us to take a moment and just acknowledge like the circumstance that we're in. And maybe we could table a vote on grants as business as usual. I would, I will vote for this, but I would like some assurance that we will leave today voting for some kind of relief fund, like an actual percentage or some kind of assurance. Because what I feel is, excuse me, Kay, what I feel is happening is that there's this sentiment that the budget doesn't matter or that it's sort of just a suggestion and it's not actually numbers that we can work with or that something is what we can or cannot work on. And I've scoured this budget. I've, I have looked at the numbers multiple times. And we speak very vaguely and theoretically about relief funding. The question about whether this is essential during a pandemic.
You went away.
I think it's on her end. Okay.
Okay, it's back now. CC, are you there?
It's trying to reconnect.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me, Patrick?
Yeah. Her internet is, the signal isn't very good.
Oh dear. Well, let me say to her, she was concerned in the proposal, we'll be hearing from Gretchen in just a moment. There is a relief fund in that proposal. And that's what she said she hoped there would be and it, it's been there. It was created. I don't know what to do if she's disappeared.
I think she was at, well, let her speak for herself, but I, I think, speaking for myself, you know, I'd like to see, I mean, if we're looking at, you know, we're committing to three point eight percent of the grants budget to go towards public art, which also sounds reasonable to me. I do think that we can commit to, just coming away from this meeting today, saying that a certain percentage of the grants funding will go towards relief.
That's going to be in the next part of the proposal. That is on the agenda. I think that's fine. We just want to now vote on the public art part. That's what's on the table. So I'll start with you, Natalie. Do you vote for the public art proposal or not?
Yes, I vote yes.
Good. Cora?
Yes.
Thank you. Quanise?
I'll abstain.
Okay. Derek?
Yes.
Gretchen?
Yes.
Amber? Stacy?
Yes.
Oona?
Yes.
Edmund?
Yes.
Chenadu?
Yes.
Marian?
Yes.
Mariah? Mariah, okay, Yosef?
I'm going to not vote.
Okay, Jose?
Yes.
CC?
I'm going to abstain as well.
All right. Alma? Alma, are you voting for your proposal?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, the majority votes for the public art proposal as part of the grants proposal. And now for the other part of the grants. That's you up, Gretchen.
Okay, I'm going to try to go through this as quickly as possible, but not very quickly because I'm really going to explain some of the the line items, not only in terms of percentages, but what the grants are, because there are a number of people on the call that may not understand what each of the grants is for. The grants committee to start with is, consists of Stacy Banks, Cora Masters Berry, Alma Gates, Yosef Palermo, Mariah Roney, Derek Younger, myself, and Kay, and Kay. We had several meetings, I think three or four, to recommend a percentage, not a dollar amount, because we had these meetings before the budget actually came out. So our discussion is pretty much in percentages. We had input from the commissioners. I circulated the document asking all commissioners to give me their input on the specific grants. We also had a public survey and what astonished me was the fact that we had sixty two percent responses from the public survey. That's phenomenal. What I'd like to do firstly is ask David to tell us a little bit about the survey results. And then I want him to talk about the grants budget formulation. So can you start, David, please, with just the survey results? Thank you.
Sure. Thanks, Gretchen. And thanks to everybody. I know everybody is feeling really passionate about this and it is, and this is an awful time in our history. So thank you for sticking with it. So we were given the task of doing two things as we moved into planning our budget for next year. One was that we anticipated having a smaller budget because of what was happening in the economy. And two, knowing that this pandemic pandemic was having an immediate impact, but also would have residual impacts. We were asked to find a way of paring down the sections of the budget we had control over in order to create some sort of fund that could be repurposed in some sort of relief format. So they were the two charges we had. As I mentioned at the last meeting, you know, the two key programs we want to keep intact were general operating support organizations and then the fellowship program. This was not a, taking a machete to all of the project-based programs. We, each of the grant managers, the managers in the grants department, there are seven of us total, went through each of the project-based grants and looked at ways that we could pare back. Some of those ways included decreasing the total award amount that grantees could or applicants could ask for. Changing some of the eligibility criteria, also reducing the total number of awards we might offer in those areas. And so on the document that was, has been shared with you in the past, on that, for each line item, you'll see a percentage reduction for each program. And that is, that's how we got to that. And we did push, sorry, Gretchen, we did push the surveys out the door and, you know, I'm sorry if some people feel that they were not robust enough or asked questions about the pandemic, but our goal was really to get a sense of the value. Organizations and individuals anticipated some of these project-based grants having on their for next year. And that was the goal of the survey. As Gretchen mentioned, we had a really response, a really robust response. And we were able to see that seventy three percent, for example, of seventy three percent of the respondents held arts education, really high value program. Seventy eight percent of folks held festivals grant, for example, in really high value. And so that further impacted the grants department thinking on how we might make adjustments. We'll talk about that. Gretchen will speak to the programs individually and the recommendations from moving forward.
Okay, Gretchen. Thank you, David.
Sorry, I had you on mute. Okay, so David's taken us through the survey pretty much. And like I said, we have had a fantastic response to it. And in terms of the grants budget formulation, David, if you could just, I know we've talked about this before. I don't want to remind everybody, we're talking about FY twenty one budget. But could you walk us through the formulation as to how we got it from the budget book to where we are now?
Right. So sometimes with a budget book, the categories don't mesh exactly with our programs. And Brian can probably better explain that. And Brian can probably better explain that, how certain line items, you know, translate from the budget book to our grants programming. Some of those line items include personnel and MOUs with other agencies and so on. So the, we also engage in sort of a process of a baseline budget. So we look at what we, the dollars at which we funded individual programs in the previous year. Grant managers will say, oh, we had, you know, more applicants this year, so we couldn't fund them. So is there a way of increasing a particular budget associated with a particular grant program for the following year? And as I said, for the, in the time I've been with the agency, it's almost seven years. We really put a great effort into, or extra effort into increasing amounts of money associated with general operating support and the fellowship grant. So that's really important. I don't know how much additional-
I want you to take the number or the percentage from the budget book that we have and break it down in terms of admin, grants, in terms of the percentages, how we got to where we are with the grants program, because it's three or four steps down.
So it's probably best to talk about the, because the percentages were crafted before the budget. So the percentages that were shared with all of the commissioners for each of the grant program, Alma and Lauren referenced earlier. Those percentages, really what we did was we looked at what we spent in FY20. And we went back to the grant program, looked at where we could pare down. And that, that figure gave us the percentage to work with. You know, I don't know if you need any more detail on that.
Let's, let's, let me go through our recommendations. And I'm gonna go through them one by one and then we'll see if there are any specific questions. I'd like to read the Grants Committee recommendation. And it recommends that the commission adopt the following resolution in regards to the FY21 grant programs. Resolved that the grant programs and their respective budget allocations for FY2021 shall be as follows. In the Arts and Humanities Education Projects, and the Arts and Humanities Education Projects is a grant that supplies in-school and out-of-school time projects for students in public schools. We are recommending that it be funded at the current level, 1.2% of the total grants budget and without financial matching requirements. So there would be no matching requirement to the organizations who receive the Arts and Humanities Education Projects budget. The second is the Arts and Humanities Fellowship Program. And the Arts and Humanities Fellowship Program is a program that is basically general operating support. Dollars for individual artists, for dance, for design, for GoGo, for library arts, media, music, teaching artists, theater, and visual arts. And we are asking, our recommendation is that we raise the minimum award amount and fund it at a to-be-determined increase from its current level. Its current level is 6.2% of the total grants budget. So depending on the numbers, we are recommending that that be a minimum, that we go up some in that particular category. Recommendation is East of the River. East of the River is funded at the current level, which is 2.3% of the total grants budget. However, our change is that it be limited eligibility to East of the River-based organizations only. So there are no West of the River award recipients in that one. Okay, projects, events, and festivals for individuals. People a lot of times think of projects, events, and festivals as street festivals, but it's so much more than that. If we look at projects, events, and festivals, I think 28 organizations were funded last year and only five of which were festivals. We, 78% of 129 organizations that answered the question in our survey on the value of PEF, we call it PEF, to their organizations assigned a high value, the highest in any category. And some of the examples in case, you know, especially for new commissioners, the DC Center for LGBTQ is an example. They have film exhibitions and book festivals. So much of this can be done online and virtually now. Smith Farm Art Theater Program, the Lissner Home for Aged Women, where they do a visual art program in the home. Iona Services for Memory Loss Program, Boys and Girls, Boys and Girls Club is one of them. For PEF individuals, we had 256 individuals responding in the survey and they placed an average of 6.5 out of 10 to this program for the next year. The reason I'm taking you through this is we kind of went through what maybe a lot of you are thinking about. Why are we having PEF? Because, you know, we're not gonna be able to have large congregations of people. But I don't want you to think that that's all there is with PEF. Examples of individual ones are Culture Unmuted, Daydream at the Ark, DC Jazz Jam, Finding Rhythm, Lins and Pins Creative Expression at St. Elizabeth's Hospital. So many of these programs are not, as they call it, you know, very large gathering kinds of organizations, organizational programs. So we are asking that projects, events, and festivals for individuals be funded at 1% of the total grants budget. We are recognizing that it's not going to be as much, so that's a 25% decrease from the current level. Okay, for projects, events, and festivals for organizations, we're also saying we're funding it at 1% of the total grants budget, which is a 40% decrease from the current level without a financial matching requirement. Okay, the Upstart Program. And the Upstart Program. Soon as I find it on my list. Is a program that provides capacity building support to organizations, $250,000 to 1.25 million. We are saying that the Upstart Program, and this is a program that many organizations really like because we're helping them try to grow. I think right now, and many of the, the people on the committee-
I think GoGo benefits from there.
I'm sorry?
I think GoGo will benefit from the Upstart.
Absolutely, because we're starting to put something out there ahead of time. It's a new program, so we need to help massage some of these programs. You're absolutely right, Chinadu. Thank you. So Upstart would be funded at 6.6% of the total grants budget. It's a 50% decrease from the current level, but still it's 0.6 of the, of the budget. Okay, general operating support, which is a big one. And that's pretty much, we're giving you money to use wherever you feel it's really critical for your organization. And we want to fund that at the current level, which is 21.7%. Who's typing? 21.7% of total grants budget without financial matching requirements. Now, this is what's interesting. Everybody reacted to the fact that we had a blank here. Well, I have to apologize for the blank. It was absolutely a typo. Our Cultural Relief Fund, it was actually in the spreadsheet that came with the package for the, the grants program. And it should have said 12% because that's what we showed on our spreadsheet. So the Cultural Relief Fund, we want to be funded at 12% of the total grants budget.
12.7%, I believe.
12%?
12.7%, I believe.
Is that what's on the spreadsheet? I think it's, oh, you're looking at the spreadsheet. Good. All right. And that the following grant programs were suggested and recommended be paused for FY2021, then resumed in fiscal year 2022, fiscal year 2022 or subsequent fiscal year. So we're only looking at this, at this one year at a time for that. So we're suggesting to pause Liftoff, Sister Cities for Individuals, and Sister Cities for Organizations. So I know that was a lot and I can review it or-
Kay, I'll ask, I'll go through and ask for a discussion. So you're making the proposal. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Stacy. So now let's have any discussion. I'll start with Mariah. Are you there? Do you have any discussion? Okay, Mary Ann, do you have any discussion? Chinadu, do you have any discussion?
Kay, I do want to say something.
Okay, go ahead.
Which program was funded for two years, the two-year cycle?
Upstart.
Upstart?
Yeah.
That would be new, Mary Ann. So Upstart and Liftoff have always been one-year programs, but consultants and the grant managers. And this was something that we talked about several months ago, so it was pre-COVID. But thought that both programs would be more successful if they were two-year programs. Because there's a lot to cram into just one year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Chinadu? This is just if anyone has any questions or discussions.
No questions or discussion.
Okay. Edmund?
No discussion.
Rona?
No. No, I understand it. I just wanted to, if anybody has any questions, like Natalie or anybody about budget and how they got to some of these numbers, this is the time that David can talk about some of the percentages and how we got there. That's all.
Okay, I'll call on everybody. Stacy?
I just wanted to mention that the, the, was it the fellowships have been raised from 2,500 to 5,000 being the minimum. I know Gretchen mentioned it.
Thank you, Stacy. Yeah.
Okay.
What she means is that the initial, they were $2,500 as the minimum grant and now it's been raised to 5,000. Thank you very much.
Kay, I'm sorry, this may also be, this is Iran. This is, may also be a good moment to interject. Besides the actual money adjustments that these grant programs are proposing, the match requirement being lifted is also going to be a big support to organizations. So these are all the different ways we're trying to, you know, come up with a way to, to help our grantees cope with the changes. So the match grant, though, that's not actual money. It's money that organizations can save, taking it away from these projects and putting it elsewhere as we're not requiring these match grants anymore.
Right. Thank you, Iran. And we did that not only for this fiscal year, for the remaining ones, but for all of FY21.
Kimber, do you have any comments or questions?
No questions. Thank you.
We know you don't. Derek?
Questions. Can you, one thing, can you just clarify? The matching requirement was taken away from individuals and organizations for- Nakap?
So Derek?
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, David. The matching requirements don't exist for individual projects, Derek. But I'll let, I'll let David speak.
Yes. So we don't require match dollars for individuals, either the relative or the projects, events, and festivals. We do require match dollars for most of the other organizational grants with the exception of what was the Fieldhead Grant and East of the River. And so the recommendation was to remove the match requirement from GOS, arts education, and projects, events, and festivals.
Thank you. I think that's a point of clarity that everyone should know.
Thanks, Derek.
Derek, thanks. Quanise?
Hi. Thanks for presenting, Gretchen. I'm a bit hesitant because we don't know where this virus is going. They're predicting it's gonna be a comeback in the fall and in the winter. And so I really, really would like to amend your proposal to have policies in place so that if folks, if this does come back and it does harm, harm the globe again, that people can use these funds as general operating.
I, I think that is what we're saying. That it, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's what we're saying when we're saying we're not putting restrictions on them.
Yeah.
No, I mean for all, for all of the programs.
You mean like the, like a project that's specific?
For any program or project-specific programs, I want to take, I want to add an amendment so that if there is an emergency, or there still is an emergency, we're in the middle of the emergency. But if it gets worse or if something happens again, people can use those funds as general operating or unrestricted, however they want to use it.
David, do you want to speak to that? Because I know this year they immediately worked with group to make that change when it was possible. But David, do you want to say something about that?
And flexibility with the dollars is so important, Quanise. We all understand that. And the challenge we had this year was that, you know, becomes match required, match dollars were required. As part of programs, they were already baked into some of their budgets, so it was hard to untangle them. Moving into next year, there will be the flexibility that they can craft a program, big or small, just using commission dollars. But also the idea of being able to adjust the scope, the timeline, and the budget. That is an ongoing commitment that we have. And we have not taken back any dollars for this year and we don't intend to. So there, hopefully that re-enters.
So you said for scope, timeline, and budget, but so if someone decides to put that towards general operating, that's no longer a scope. So I just want to make sure that there's actual language that states that in our policies, it doesn't necessarily have to be in the applications or RFPs, but there's something in our policies on the back end, just in case something like this does happen and we can unrestrict all of those program-specific, project-specific funds.
Right. I understand what you're saying, Quanise. I think that we still need to have a safeguard that it is approved by, you know, a grant manager. And we're all very willing to work with organizations and individuals if they have to adjust their work.
Quanise? I'd like to suggest that we make this a separate policy that we put forth for, after we, if we pass this recommendation, that then we could separately say something that-
Yep.
About special circumstances and how we deal with it.
Yeah, I think that would be great. That makes sense, yeah.
I think it's a good thing to do. We already did it the best we could this year. I think we're all willing to do it. So can do that as a separate amendment. Cora, do you have anything to say?
She goes.
I don't have to worry everybody about my, my questions. I kind of get this part.
Natalie, do you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I heard GoGo mentioned a couple times and I wanted to ask about what this fellowship, what does this line mean?
We added it to, as one of the fellowship programs, we added it to that cohort. I think we talked about it at the last meeting. I'm not sure if you were there or not.
That GoGo has a special category that generally it would have been just musicians. But now we have a special place just for, I mean, musicians in general can apply, but if you're a GoGo musician, you have a special set aside just for you.
Right.
Natalie, if I can, this is David, if I can provide some clarity. The fellowship grant is unrestricted, so if somebody receives a fellowship award, they can use it to pay their mortgage, to rent a studio or rehearsal space. And the only thing they have to do at the la, at the end of the year for their annual report is submit a letter to us, a notarized letter, saying they paid themselves. And individuals are also eligible to apply to projects, events, and festivals if they have a project, which could be a series of concerts that they would like to do or a recording. And then also, like, GoGo bands could apply as a group to the projects, events, and festivals, the organization support. And I would love to, and I know there's interest in education too, I'm an arts education person. I'd love to see what we can do to foster a group of GoGo grantees.
Yeah, I guess that's where my, you know, my question, so with the, just so I understand, so the fellowship, so it's these categories, dance?
It's one of those. GoGo is a separate one within that list.
So there, but there are, so there are like one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, something like that category, and then GoGo would be one of them?
Yes.
Okay. And there was also something that mentioned about the, the Upstart. Because, you know, what I wanted to say is, I was able to present to the Grants Committee last, before the last meeting, about some recommendations from Charles Stevenson and Suzanne Lee, who did a report on how to make GoGo official. And one of their feelings, one of the recommendations that came out of the report was to have create, actually create a GoGo cohort that would cross all of the areas that, that Arts Commission operates in. Because in addition to individual artists, you know, there needs to be, you know, I think Chinadu mentioned this, you know, there's, there needs to be some institutional capacity building, you know, there's art education, there's GoGo education, there's like, it's- education, there's Gogo education, there's like, it's an all-encompassing thing. And my concern is that this is the 20, the FYI 21 budget, this is the only chance to really get, you know, sufficient support through the Arts Commission. And I don't know that this is going to be enough to sort of meet, meet the, the needs that are there, you know, with Gogo being the official music. So, you know, I would like to have the Commission, you know, seriously think about entertaining the, the editors of this report and looking at their recommendations, which includes look at creating, actually creating a whole Gogo cohort that would span all of the different areas that the Arts Commission is. And so I, I wanted, wanted to ask, like, this is sort of, like, it seems to me like this is the main work of the Commission, and it's gone through eight people on the Grants Committee. When is there going to be an opportunity, sort of meaningful, structural, you know, inclusion for Gogo, which has not been included for most of the Arts Commission's existence?
Can before, can I, can I, can I respond to that? I mean, I respond, but add on to that just for a second, if you don't mind, Gretchen?
Yeah.
Because as I'm listening to you, Natalie, I know a lot has gone on, pandemic is, you know, kind of thought everything. But my recommendation would be, we could put, push a pause on that and go back and, and assemble the ad hoc committee on Gogo, which we really haven't had a chance to deal with, and come out with some, because the original vision was to make Gogo become a fabric of, of this city. And there are ways to do it, like you said, all the way across the board. So if you could come out with some strong or some clear recommendations that they could make to the other committees, grant committees, finances, whichever would be the appropriate thing, I think that would be more helpful, because then we could have a clear understanding.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Can I take you back, Quanise? Yeah. I'd also like to suggest, since Gogo is now the official music of the District of Columbia, and it's been named that by the mayor and approved by the council, I'm not sure whether we've had discussions about whether or not they can designate specific dollars. I haven't had it.
I've talked to some council members, and I told them, you passed a bill without a budget. So I mean, that is definitely an option, until we get that, you know, corrected, and we're working on it, we still can look at it as, as an example of how we lift it up and give it official status by how we view it and how we present it to the Arts Commission. But I think we need those direct recommendations from the ad hoc committee.
Yes. But I, I also just wanted to say that it, it's just really, it's, the timing is a real issue, is a real concern for me, because, you know, this is the only bite of the apple that we have right now, and it's just not sufficient. So, you know, and, and I, I think it's a great start, but if this ship sails today and we vote on this, then there's no way to get access to that $38 million that's on the table right now, you know, in a substantive way. And I'm, that's what would give me some real pause about voting for this, even though, you know, it looks like, you know, there's, like, everything looks really good. I mean, I could see all of the work that's gone into this from the committees, but my, my only concern is, is just not, like, there needs to be a big chunk, a significant systemic chunk of what this Arts Commission does. And, you know, I don't know how to, how we, and, and that means, that means financial. So I don't know how we can do that under this timeframe.
Well, I think David was mentioning, and I know it's not the biggest chunk you want, but this fellowship is only one grant that the artist can apply to. They can also apply to PEP, they can apply to a number of other grants, and it's still not the big chunk that you want that's dedicated. But right now, that's what we have. I agree with Cora. Perhaps you can call the ad hoc committee together and give us some specific recommendations from that committee.
I would love some guidance, because we have some arts education programming dollars. We have a program called Celebrate the Creative Spark, and you're a way of, you know, I'm not too familiar with the Gogo community, so I would really appreciate your guidance, and I'd love to part in the conversation.
Natalie, I can't remember. Committee have a staff member attached to it?
It did not.
David would be very helpful. He would be able to say which way the budget could correspond to different parts.
Right. So, so, okay, so if, I mean, if that's the case, I think that, you know, I, I would like to leave open the possibility, you know, of having some sort of cohort considerations on all of the budget items. It's great that we have it within the fellowship, like, that's, that's perfect. But I'm wondering if, you know, we can live, leave open the possibility, after we've been able to present some of the information from the experts, for us to sort of have another motion to include Gogo across, you know, all of the activities that the Commission does.
I don't see how you can do that now without specific recommendations. I think you need to go back to your specific group, have a staff member attached, and come back with specific recommendations that the Commission can look at. I don't think you can just say it goes across everything. I think that's way too general, that people don't have, they don't know what they're voting on. So I think if you do have a staff member that will give you more, I guess you'll have more bulk to your proposals.
Well, I, so I think that, you know, the, one of the big issues right now is that Gogo artists who've never been involved, never, never been able to apply, there are many, you know, even for the emergency funding, was very difficult to sort of navigate that. They're asking questions that are not, you know, and that's a whole other thing for us to discuss, about these, talking about people's arrests records and all these other things that are like, you know, not really relevant to doing art. You know, there's all these ways that, that Gogo has been excluded, and to sort of ask them to be, to be sort of fighting it out with everybody else for the third, two-thirds of the grant budget that's still on the table is just not, you know, it's just not, it's just not reasonable. So I do think.
Why shouldn't they fight it out with a jazz group or any other group? I mean, right now?
They shouldn't fight it out with the jazz group, because jazz was invented in New Orleans, and Gogo was invented in Washington DC. And we have a very unique response, special responsibility that's frankly been neglected for its 40-year existence. So a lot of, there's a lot of, there's a lot of catching up to do, to do done, as far as investments in Gogo. And this year is really the time to do it, at a time when all of the artists, they haven't worked since March. So, you know, there's a real sense of urgency, and, you know, when I hear things, and I heard this from the Grant Committee, when I suggested including Gogo in the emergency funding, that it's too specific, you know, that's too much. Like, I think that, you know, perhaps it might be useful for all of our commissioners to be able to get an opportunity to, to learn more about, you know, learn more about the history of Gogo, and it's, how it's intertwined with our city, and why it's really up to our, we, it is our job as a Commission to make sure that it's included. And this sort of like, fight it out with everybody else, like, we're starting with the wrong, we're, we're starting from the wrong perspective, because that's, that's the status quo. And.
I want to go back to, to just kind of amplify what Cora said. I think we really need to look at the body who made this official, and try to get, where are we going to see big dollars coming?
I agree with that, Gretchen. And, and you know what, that's going on too. And, but, you know, I just, I want to put that on, you know, and, and so, thank you for giving me the time right now, because I, I do think that we don't need the commit, we don't need the council to, to tell us to do the right thing by our city's official music. We don't need them to do that. I think we could, we have it within our power to do this ourselves.
I agree.
We don't have power to. Wait a minute, we don't have, go ahead.
For one and for all, as a relation to Natalie, why don't, why, why can't they, why shouldn't we fight it out with jazz? And there's only one answer to that, and it's because jazz was not declared the official music. This is official music, they don't fight it out with anybody. It's just treated with the status it was given. And all I'm trying to do is help by, one, we're doing what we should do with the council, but also making sure that we come up with some substantive, and what I think are some pretty specific and broad-ranging suggestions and, and recommendations from our committee. That's why we can do a committee, I mean, all this committee calls, we can do that in 24 hours and get it back to you. We will, but it has to be done for this budget, is I think Natalie's concerned. That's her concern.
I totally agree. It has to be done for this budget, because we're talking FY21. I would like to recommend is that, I still want to go with what we have here, because I at least want to make sure it's where it is. But is there a way, Natalie, that you could get the ad hoc Gogo committee together for a meeting? This, this week is almost over. Next week? So that we can perhaps then have an amendment or something to this?
Anticipating a vote today, you know, we have a very short turnaround, and we have to put our guidelines out. It covers all, the scope of everything. It could be that we work with Gogo so that every category, Gogo figures out if this is a category they can apply to, and how it fits them, and what to do. We can work with those artists so that they can penetrate all the cohorts we've got. We've already set aside a cohort just for them. But, but the money we've got is going across the board, and I want to figure out how to include them with, in what we're doing. I don't know what else we could do. David said.
We had special, we had special sessions in the, you know, for community, for, for potential grantees, in terms of how to apply, how to organize, what it is that's needed. Basically, it's almost like a tutorial, and it could certainly be done online, and we would get the names of the organizations from Natalie, because I'm sure she knows so many of the people who would be interested in applying. And we can really help them and try to walk them through in terms of how to apply to these grants, and what they need to do, and how we, once they have a draft, we go through them and we help them. And I think that's what we should do to start with. I, I also think that the council should be giving, should be giving a special allocation, a special appropriation for, for Gogo, since they declared it our national, our, our, our music for DC. And, and I think that, you know, I'm, I'm assuming that groups will be coming to the council sessions for our hearings to testify in support of that.
Yeah.
One question.
I just wanted to say, with, with all this discussion around Gogo, I'm not necessarily comfortable in voting in your proposal right now, Gretchen, so I would like to make a motion to postpone the motion that's on the floor.
We've got to vote on the motion that's on the floor already?
Yes.
To postpone the motion that's on the floor. And that's a part of privacy rules as well.
It is. But can, can I make a statement, please? We can pluck this out of the other recommendations, but I really don't want to do that, because right now, Gogo has its own part of one particular grant, and it also, people that are Gogo artists can apply for two or three other grants that are already on the table, as Mary Ann was saying. So I just don't want to get rid of it right now.
Well, you may not want to pluck it, but this is a part of the work. Like, this is the work that we have to do. And so I just, I, like I said, I'm with Natalie, I'm with a lot of you who want to push Gogo at the forefront. So I think that we should postpone this motion. And so.
Are you suggesting we take, are we suggesting you take, take it out of the fellowship program?
No, I'm suggesting that Natalie has an opportunity to do research with her ad hoc committee, come back to you all with recommendations, and then include that into the overall, the proposal that you're putting forth.
The issue we have with that is that we've really got to get these grants out the door. So I'm not sure, Natalie, what your timeframe could be, and I really, you know, this is just my opinion. I don't know.
Gretchen, technically, she has something on the table. If we give a second, we have to vote on whether or not to postpone this. So does anyone want to second Quanise's recommendation that postpone this vote? I would second. We're going to call on everyone to vote on whether we postpone it.
Are we talking about my, the entire proposal?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
You mean, all of, all of the grants that I mentioned, we're talking about?
Talking about your, yes, we're talking about the high proposal for FY21. We're going to vote right, whether or not we're going to postpone it. Yes.
Is there a discussion on this vote?
Yes, there can be a discussion, because there is always discussion. So let's have a discussion on this before we vote on whether or not it's going to be postponed.
So I think that I'm going to support postponing this, because I think that the recommendation currently proposed, there's even still room to update it and make it stronger. For example, I'm not, I'm not sold on including Upstart in FY21. This is a grant program. For, for, for those commissioners who don't know what our grant programs are, Upstart is a program to fund a consultant to work with organizations with budgets of $250,000 to 1.5 million. And it currently represents about $175,000 in next year's budget, and that's money that could be reallocated to expanding artist's fellowship funds. If we were to pay $5,000 minimum to artists using that $175,000, that would be 35 DC artists that we could fund just out of that. Upstart's current funding largely goes to a consultant. So instead of paying one person six figures, I'd much rather be getting that money into the hands of more individual artists. So with that as another reason to postpone this vote, this recommendation as currently presented by the Grants Committee, I would like to offer that to the rest of the commissioners for consideration ahead of this vote.
Yeah, but Yosef, couldn't you just make a motion to take Upstart out of the batch and not have a postponement?
We've got something on the table right now. We can't keep interfering with this. We've got a motion to vote on whether or not we're going to postpone this. If that passes or doesn't pass, then you can do something else. But that's what's on the table right now, Rona.
Can I call the questions so we can vote?
Yes.
Second.
Alma, how do you vote? Do you vote for postponing or against postponing, Alma?
Against postponing.
See, that's not necessary. CC, how do you vote? CC, do you vote for postponing or against postponing? Jose, do you vote for postponing or against postponing?
I vote against postponing. We need to move something on, and this is our work. In Gogo, we can do more once the discussion starts. It's not like we're not allowing them. And I agree with the training that should be done that Mary Ann suggested. We should invite anyone in the Gogo community to come to our training. Thank you.
Okay, Jose. Yosef, do you vote for or against postponing?
I mean, I, I definitely think that we should reconsider this recommendation. I like the proposal that Quanise introduced earlier with the policy. So however we get those changes, whether it's postponing or changing it in this meeting, like.
Yes or no, Yosef? Do you vote for postponing or not postponing?
Yeah, I'll vote to postpone.
Okay, you're for it. Mariah, are you there? We haven't heard from you today, and I think.
I'm here.
Are you going to vote for postponing or against postponing?
I'm going to vote against postponing, so we can get these programs underway.
Okay. Mary Ann, are you for or against postponing?
I'm against postponing.
Chinadu, are you for or against postponing?
I'm against, because starting something right now would just, you know, give us an idea of how it was, it's going to be once we get more knowledgeable about Gogo to, you know, everybody, or even those people that's at Gogo. I used to be in a Gogo band, and I talked to them. And they liked that, that fact that we're actually talking about how to, you know, get relief, or just them having a jumpstart. I think they need to understand what's going on. I think if, I agree with Jose. Jose, if we invite somebody from the Gogo band, they can share more light on, you know, I'm against.
Edmund, are you for postponing this vote today or against it?
I'm against postponing.
Okay. Rona?
Against postponing.
Stacy?
I'm against postponing, but I would like to get Gogo more involved, and we can, we can work on that after this. But definitely, we get them into, more into the budget.
Okay, Kimber?
I'm against postponing.
Gretchen?
Against postponing.
Derek?
It's postponing.
Quanise? Yes, you're for it.
For.
Cora? Cora?
I am, um, I'm for, but I'm also very disappointed and guys don't really get it. But I'm against, I'm, I'm for postponing and.
Okay, Natalie?
So I just wanted to just respond really quickly to what, uh, Jose and Chinadu said about, um, you know, teaching the Go-Go, you know, community and.
I think we need, we need to.
They, they got their opportunity to say something, so I just need to address that. It's not about having them adapt to what our ways, you know, it's about making a system that makes more sense to the cultural, that Go-Go has its own cultural logic. And so we have to do things that sort of make sense for the way that it works. You know, it's in our, it's its own organic, um, art form. And so the idea that we have to train people to think the way that artists are trained to think, but our grantees is that's, that's not what we're talking about. Also, this isn't a Go-Go amendment. This is about pausing to think, think through the budget in a way that could have more impact, more, uh, voice from more commissioners beyond the eight people who are on the grants committee, where that seems to be the bottleneck. So I vote for postponing. Um, thank you, Quanise, for the motion.
Thank you. So, uh, the against postponing carries with one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11 votes against and four, four. Um, no, I think that's right. So it won't be postponed, so we will continue to vote on the, um, proposal as it is on the table. It's been, um, presented by Gretchen.
I'd like to make a motion for an amendment so that we can unrestrict if there is, uh, unrestrict the programs and, uh, specific grant programs for fiscal year 21 because I really, really want that flexibility in that policy. I don't think it should wait after we vote on this. I think it needs to be included in those policies once we, uh, while we're passing this. So again, my motion is to, um, have a, to amend the current proposal by stating that there is flexibility in the program and the project-specific grant programs so that in case there's an emergency, people can unrestrict their funds.
Can I say something, Kay? I thought we just said, Quanise, that we were going to write a policy that does apply if there's an emergency and we, but it, but you can't just unrestrict everything because if some, for an example, if someone comes along and and they don't meet the government requirements of clean hands or whatever else is required, you can't just do it across the board. I think you, I thought we agreed that we're doing a policy.
That's not what I'm talking about, Rona. I mean, if somebody's given a grant, they're already went through those clean hands and all that. I'm not saying give the money out to anyone and everyone. If there are grant programs, so if we have a cohort of PEF grantees and EBITDA comes back in the spring of 2021 and they, they're struggling and they can't do their programs, I want us to be able to allow them to use that money for whatever they need that money for versus the program.
David, can you address Quanise? I can have an understanding of how that would work.
Just a second, David did it again and, um, I think that there was a sentiment, I hope, based on what we did this year already. I don't think that's a problem. I just thought it was cleaner to vote on this and then have a secret, separate policy.
I think they go hand in hand, Kay. Like I think I don't want to wait, I want to include that and, and, um, I don't want to keep going back to staff because when it, when looking at the legislation, the policies are for the commissioners. So that's why I think that we don't necessarily need, we hear David's perspective, which is great, but I think we need to make sure that we're including that while we're passing this.
Yeah, but your policy is just so general, we need to ferret it out. We need to understand what the policy is.
Figure out exactly what it's being worded. And I think maybe I'm hearing you say that we, for instance, let's just say we want to vote to pass the budget recommendations that are on the table right now with the understanding that right now, most, um, you know, many requirements have been waived and we will work with every organization or individual to allow them to use the money to the maximum flexibility during the next year as they, something like that.
Kay, if I be, um, this is Iran. I, I think the, the, we have already demonstrated this year, um, as we do every time that we are vested in the success of grantees and that we will be looking for ways to support grantees a- as the occasion demands at every turn. I have misgivings about baking this into guidelines or policies at one stage just because, you know, I don't want the blanket statement to be a way that grantees default to that once it's written in stone. We have demonstrated, we have the trust of the community and hopefully the commissioners that we are nimble in our grant making and that we are, uh, you know, within best practices of what all other grant makers are making, are doing in emergency situations. So I would question against a blanket policy being in place without the, the vetting process being there.
Quanise has the right to make this amendment. And if you want to say it specifically and then we can get a second and then we can vote on this amendment. And.
I would like to, uh, vote to, make a motion to pass the proposal as is with the amendment of, oh, let me see if I can say it correctly, with an amendment that states that organizations can use project-specific or grantees can use project-specific funding with flexibility if there is another crisis or if there's a resurgence in the crisis.
And her second.
What does the flexibility mean? I think you want to give the grantees.
Basically, just like what they've been doing, like you know how David says, talking to people and we're doing case by case? So this would, would take that step away, right? Like if something happened again, we wouldn't, would necessarily have to do case by case. But if a grantee calls us and says, I can't do a PEF grant, I need to make this flexible, then it was automatically then, like we can't, we don't have to go through the step process of like getting the staff, having them determine whether or not they could do it or not, I think having that incorporated. But we also don't have to put that into the application, the RFP. But we know that this is something that we have in the background in case the resurgence happens in the fall and in the spring of this year.
But do you want, do you want to clearly say?
Discussion, I'm looking for a second. We need a second before we have all this discussion.
Carl, what's your thought on this?
I'm looking Gretchen, Rona?
Second, there's no need for discussion.
There's no need for discussion unless we have a second to the proposal. So it's trying to be.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just trying to be careful of the thing because I know we, I love the grant programs, it's great, but I just want to be very mindful of the fact that we're in the middle of a crisis, even though we want to move on as business as usual. We can, we.
We understand, we have a proposal. Guys, let me run this meeting. We have a proposal, we need a second to your amendment. And then we can have discussion and a vote on this amendment. I think we all understand the sentiment. Um, it's a matter of whether we vote on it, yes or no. I think, I personally, no, is there a second? Let me say that.
Chinadu, I second that.
Someone seconded it?
That's me.
Okay, good. Now we can have some discussion. There's been discussion, Haran spoke. As, I'd like to say that, uh, whether or not this passes as an amendment attached to Gretchen's proposal for grants for next year, I would like to craft an amendment separately if this one doesn't pass that addresses this issue in a way that's appropriate. Yeah.
This is Gretchen, I would, I would like to, um.
CC, hold, CC is trying to contribute to the discussion, but it's having some technical difficulties. Patrick, can you unmute her?
Excuse.
Let me find her now.
Let me, may I finish, please? Um, I think we should come up with the, the proper language for the amendment. Um, and I think Carl, I'm not sure, is Carl on the line?
Well, there's amendment on the table, Gretchen. We've got to vote on the one that's on the table.
Yeah, that's, that's, we're talking about Quanise's amendment, right?
Yeah, we can't change the language. It's presented in as it is. If it doesn't pass, we could have another one, but this is the one that we have right now.
Okay, so what's the amendment exactly?
Can you?
Quanise, can you say it again, please?
Okay.
So, uh, I propose that we pass the recommendations from the grants committee with an amendment that states that if there is a resurgence or, uh, a resurgence of the, the global crisis, that we are flexible in the program-specific and project-specific grantee funding.
Can you add, uh, well? I'm just thinking it might be to the extent possible according to the, uh, rules that we're governed under by the Office of Projects and. Let's leave it like it is. Okay, let's, let's vote on it.
I like what you said, Kay, though. I think that's critical because we have to respond to them.
That means I have to amend the amendment.
Well, no, you don't have to amend it, just ask Quanise to add it to what you're proposing.
Yeah. She can accept it.
Okay.
Can somebody say it again? Oh, God.
Quanise, could you, would you consider adding according to the rules we're governed by? Um, yes.
Good, see, that wasn't hard.
And let me, let me second my suggestion.
I second second.
Okay, now let's vote on whether or not we're going to do this. Um, I'll start with, uh, Yosef.
What, what's the vote?
We're going to vote yes or no to the amendment that Quanise has put forth. It basically says we, uh, passed, this would be a pass, what Gretchen's put on the table, and add to it that we will work with everyone with the utmost flexibility if there's another pandemic or resurgence of this virus and we will work with them under the rules we're governed by. Is that correct, Quanise?
Yes.
So do you agree with that?
I still think we need to, I, I still think we need to reallocate.
It's a vote.
Well, I have voted, well, I have my own amendment then, if that's, I mean.
We're voting on this amendment, right?
Voting on Quanise's amendment.
Yosef, we're voting on this. We're voting on the amendment.
If, if, fine, I'll, I'll vote for Quanise's amendment.
Okay, Mariah?
I'm going to abstain for this.
Okay, Mary Ann?
Um, yes.
Chinadu? Chinadu?
Did you hear me?
Yeah, no, I didn't. Okay, I got you, yes. Edmund?
Yes.
Rona?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Kimber?
Yes.
Gretchen?
Yes.
Derek? Derek? Quanise, I put you as yes. Correct? Cora?
No, just kidding, yes.
Natalie? Yes. Alma?
Oh, God.
Alma?
Nothing funny.
Where's Derek?
I don't know. CC?
I abstained.
Okay, thank you, Derek. Uh, CC?
Yes.
Yes.
Alma? Can you hear her? Jose?
I supported, yes.
Okay, so guys, Gretchen, uh, Quanise, that means not only that the proposal passed, but it also means that the amendment to give greatest flexibility to the community, if need be, passed also.
In accordance with our rules, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So thank you so much. And that concludes that part of the agenda. It's a finance report. CC?
Um, I just, I did, I had a, have a.
You're echoing.
I know, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Try again, CC?
Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Um. Well, as far as the budget, um, I want to thank the finance committee for meeting yesterday. I know it was a short turnaround. Um, I especially want to thank Brian and Haran for their patience in answering all of our questions. It appears that FY20, um, is still continuing, um, as, uh, as expected. Um, there are still some adjustments and cuts that potentially need to be made, but I'm assured that all of our, um, all of our commitments will be fulfilled. Um, as far as FY20, I think everyone was, of course, delighted and very surprised by the, uh, addition to the budget. Um, no one really expected that our budget would grow, um, given, uh, basically all the news we heard to the contrary. I would actually just like to propose, because I want to just go back to what I was saying before, that I really think it's important that we, um, uh, set aside money for relief funding. I'm very glad it's part of the grants proposal. And I would just like to propose that if there are any additional overages in the budget, that that also be designated to the relief fund. I know everybody wants to keep telling me or talking to me about the budget numbers, this is and that, but I have looked through them very clearly. And I do believe that there is potentially some money based on the proposed budget, whether it shakes out that way or not. I think it is a statement to be made that this commission, um, you know, says to the community that anything we have extra, uh, we want to give for relief. And I would just like to put that out there.
Uh, do you want to make that a motion?
Yes.
Can I, can I ask something else?
Yes.
And by that, do you mean, because we, there also was overages from 2019. So is that, are you including that when you're talking about? Because I don't think that we've discussed that.
Right, so I want to be very careful about how I answer that because I know that there are specific guidelines to how money can be moved within the agency. So I would amend, I would caveat that answer by saying that within the guidelines that's legislated to us and that was it, that is within our purview to decide. I would also like any additional monies to go to relief funding. I'll make it pretty general, but, um, I know that there is some, um, money coming back to a fab, to a fab grant and that has to stay within, um, that grant cohort. But our legislation regarding fab is very specific and there's a number attached to it. And so anything in excess of that number can technically be used, um, in other grant areas. So, uh, you know, however the committee wants to, um, you know, figure that out, uh, I leave it to them. But I do think it's important that we make that statement to the community that any extra money that we find, uh, can be used for relief. The, the, the grants committees have made their proposals, we voted on them. If there's money on the table, I think it should go to relief.
CC, um, some, I understand what you're saying. I'm just trying to think of a way to word it because the way we've tried to structure this is actually to make our GOS and our fellowships relief themselves because we've taken all of the constraints around them, off of them. And so.
Kay, respectfully, respectfully, I hear what you're saying. I'm trying to make a totally different point. We just voted on the slate of programs, um, without a report from on the budget, but that's neither here nor there. Um, I'm simply making a proposal that if there's any additional overages in the budget that has not been accounted for, that we put that into grant relief to the extent that we can by legislation. If it's, you know, operations money, I'm not touching that, nothing I've ever, I, I think that I want to dispel any kind of confusion right now. I know our budget, I understand our budget. I've had a tutorial by Brian on a monthly basis. I've spoken to our CFO, uh, I've spoken to Haran on numerous occasions. So I, I really like, I take, um, I take this responsibility, please let me finish. I take this responsibility as the treasurer and as the head of the committee that oversees the budget very seriously. Um, we are in a pandemic. Um, you know, uh, I, I recognize my own privilege in this situation that I am not suffering right now and I'm very pleased, but at one time I did. So this is really for all the nameless, faceless people on the phone right now who are, who are either not part of our granting process or who are, who are really struggling right now. So this is really for all the nameless, faceless people on the phone right now, who are, are either not part of our granting process or who are, who are really struggling right now. So I, this is all I'm saying. Like, I know our budget. I'm, I really don't want people telling me what we can and cannot do, because I do not make recommendations without full knowledge of what is happening. So I understand we can't touch operations. I understand we cannot touch the legislated portions of the budget. So please, just with that said, the portion of the budget, if there are any overages, I propose that we put them into the relief funding pot. That's it. That is, that is my proposal. Please feel free to discuss, but I don't need a rationalization or, or anybody telling me, like, what we are or not doing. I'm fully aware of what we're doing. I'm simply trying to make another case for funding, given that we are in the middle of a pandemic. I would also like to say that this sense of urgency about getting the money out, we're talking about applications, because we are still talking about FY21. That budget does not even go into effect until October 1st. So we understand that there's a lot that can happen with the budget between now and then. So this idea that we're trying to shut down conversation, or that we don't want to talk about things because we have to get things going, like, that's a little bit not as accurate, because we're talking about delaying an application. And if that means, you know, I think the community would understand if we say, listen, we're trying to do the best by you, and it might take us a little bit more time to put the application together, but when we do, it's going to serve you best. And I don't think us saying, like, we can't have these conversations because we have to get this money out is just not true, because we're talking about money that isn't even going to be available until October. And I will leave it, I'm going to leave it at that. I'm going to leave it at that. I made my proposal, so.
You're talking about two different things right now. One was an amendment or a proposal you wanted to have a vote on, and another was an editorial about another matter. So, understanding that.
They're not two matters, Kay. I'm talking about the fiscal 21 budget. The proposal is about the fiscal 21 budget. And the conversation about the urgency to get this money out is this idea about getting 21 money out, and 21 money out is not even available till October. That's all I'm trying to clarify. They are two sides.
Did we get a second on this, or can we move to a vote?
Yes, that's what I'd like to have. Is there a second?
A second there.
Okay, so let's, I don't know if there's any discussion.
What are we, what are we voting on?
We're voting on whether to put any additional money that might be in the budget that's available for relief into relief.
Okay. Can anybody be, who can be against that?
Is there any discussion before I call for a vote? Anybody have anything to say?
Vote.
Kay, I do, I, I do want to say one thing. I do appreciate all of the thought and the, the intentionality behind funding for relief. The agency's mandate is to provide competitive grants, and within that, we can figure out what relief looks like. Funding artists, providing enhancements, providing grant money is all supporting artists. So that understanding needs to be front and central. All of the work that we do is in support of artists. As, you know, this one singled out relief package, to me, I worry about whether or not that involves competitive grant making. Is it just money that's going to be handed out to artists? There's not, no, not enough detail there beyond what, what Gretchen has as a percentage of the. And so, and so I bring that to people's attention. Let me stop there.
I think the concept, I think we're voting on the concept and the process by which we disseminate or solicit or give this fund is a detail.
Yes, ma'am.
The concept, the concept, Huron, of not doing business as usual, to come up with a relief fund and any extra money that contributes to that, like, maybe we could get on par with the rest of the organizations in this country. We might start trying to do that, because we are not on par with them. So I think the concept of doing that puts us in the right direction and the right mindset. You're talking about process.
I agree. And the, the, the FY21 grant proposal before us includes that relief money. It already does. So we're already thinking along those lines. We've already been thinking about what extra money is and how do we unwrap through fab and all of these different ideas. And we are on par with all area grant makers in doing what, yes, we are, ma'am. I, I will, I will beg to differ.
We don't do that publicly, because we're not. So don't, so, let's keep going, but don't say that.
That's your opinion.
We're not. And no, it's not my opinion. It's fact.
Yeah, it is.
Everyone has a right to their own opinion. Let's, don't get in an argument.
Facts.
Okay. So, but the only thing.
Huron, that maybe help, will help us. Is, is Cece, what you're saying, if there's any extra dollars, they would just enhance the relief grant bucket that we just voted on? So they would follow the same structure? They would just increase whatever that percentage is, not create another fund?
Thank you, Kimber. Exactly, yes, that.
Not increase the percentage, increase the amount.
No, just.
There's already a pot for relief.
There's already, there's already a pot that was voted on. So this.
Extra beyond that pot to the pot. That's all, right?
Correct, yes.
So Cece?
What?
So Cece, would this mean that all the other pots, GOS, fellowships and so on, would not get the extra money? Is that sort of how it would play out?
Yes. It's, it's, it's basically a statement as a commission to say that in the middle of a pandemic, if there's any money, we're going to put it towards relief. I'm not in any way suggesting we start handing out money sight unseen. We are still following the same process as we would for every other cohort. It's simply that we don't need to make, go through this vote. I, I, for myself, it's, it's sort of a, it's a statement that as a governing body for the Arts Agency of DC, that if we have extra money, we give it to this relief fund. Everybody's already made the argument about how we're already doing relief work and support for the community. So why can we not just give the, any overages to this specific fund during this pandemic time?
Does it amount, Cece, let me ask you a question. Are you asking that any and every amount? I mean, I'm just addressing Huron's concern regarding other grants that have, that have needs as well. So it doesn't matter what you.
It's a possibility we are. Let me just. I'm trying to answer the question. Okay. Well, based on the conversation, we've, we are meeting those, you know, we are already meeting those needs. We are supporting the grants that we currently have, and we are continuing to support the artists, or excuse me, the grantees and the community that we are already, that we have traditionally supported and that we are charged to support. That's what I'm hearing. So, but we're also.
Can you speak to that? Question for clarification. So if we put all the extra money into the quote unquote Cultural Relief Fund, we then at that point, once we start using it, because it's just there, then we define how it's used? What's your thought on that?
But you've already defined.
A whole nother conversation, Gretchen.
Excuse me, you've already defined how it's used, because you've, we've already voted on a proposal to have 12% of the budget for relief. I'm simply saying, should we find ourselves in a situation that we have more to give to that fund, I would like us to give to that fund for this fiscal year, given that we are in the middle of a pandemic. That's it. That's, it's, I'm not trying to overcomplicate things. It seems that every budget category is, aside from the three that we've paused, is moving forward. So.
Cece, does this mean if some money came back to us in general operating, you wouldn't want it to go and be distributed again to the other grantees in general operating? You'd want to take it, put it into a new, the new category of relief?
Yes.
And if things came back from individuals, you wouldn't want to go through the other individual categories? You'd want it to go into relief?
Yes. I mean, I'd like to remind us that if, if, if the chorus that I'm hearing is that, oh, we support artists anyway, it doesn't really matter what pot it goes to, right? We're supporting artists, or we're supporting our organizations. Not in, if an artist has a returned money and we give it to the cultural fund and artists apply to that fund, we're in effect supporting artists. It's kind of.
So if it comes back to GOS or fellowship and gets redistributed in those pots that they started in, it also goes to our debt. Do you see what I mean?
No, I, I guess I'm, I'm, I don't know how us just. Yeah, yeah, no. And I'm, I'm saying, I, I think, I think that's a difference between, that's not necessarily additional money. But I, but yes, I, I answer the question with yes. If there's any extra money that we have the discretion to decide where it goes, I would like to propose that it go to the relief fund. That's it. That's all I'm proposing.
Wait, Cece, can I ask a question, Kay?
Yeah.
So Cece, if money comes back from arts education because they couldn't set up something virtually, you're saying that instead of putting it back into the kids' arts education pot, you would just stick it into a general relief fund?
Well, because presumably, well, yes, because presumably, yes.
It's either yes or no.
Yes, yes. And presumably, there are arts educations organizations that will probably be applying for relief funds. So I, I think if there's a concern that arts educators or arts education organizations will not be serviced by this fund, I don't know that that's something that we need to worry about.
My question, my question is, you're taking money from an arts education pot and putting it into a general relief fund where they are now competing, not against their own arts educators, but just anybody?
Well, I'm saying if there's an overage. I'm not saying in general.
That's what I'm talking about. I'm, so, I, I know, just, my question is very simple, just like your, yours. You're saying, put it into a general pot. So arts education person is now competing against someone who has a GOS grant.
Rona, the answer is the same for arts education as GOS, as individuals, as, how many people want to ask me which particular grant category? The answer is yes. If there's money that's left over, presumably if the money is left over, it probably is as a result of the pandemic. And so putting it into relief so that it can then go back out into the community does not seem that out of the ordinary. Again, this is a proposal. The answer is yes. If there's extra money.
There's a second. Is there a second?
I believe Chinadu has seconded.
Right, thank you. So let's call on votes. Alma, do you vote yes or no? Alma?
No.
Okay. Cece would be yes. Jose? Jose, are you there?
Sorry.
Are you voting yes or no, Jose?
No.
I couldn't hear you. Yes or no?
No.
Okay. Joseph?
I, I don't know how anybody could vote against this. I'm for it.
Mariah?
No.
Mary Ann? Mary Ann, are you there?
No.
Okay. Chinadu?
Did you hear me?
I did hear you, yes.
I want to be for it. I want to say, like, if people don't qualify for the, this is something that they probably would make easier to qualify for. So I want, I want everybody to just keep that in mind, you know, for the relief fund, what Cece is saying.
Okay. Okay, Edmund?
Four.
Okay, Rona?
No.
Stacy?
I'm for it.
Kimber?
Abstain.
Gretchen?
No.
Derek?
No.
Quanise?
Yes.
Cora? Natalie?
Yes, I think this will be a good way to help get more people in.
Yes. Okay. It passed, I think, nine to eight. Let me see. You know, it might be, count this for you. Alma, Jose, Mariah, Mary Ann, Rona, Gretchen and Derek voted against this. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Cece? Chinadu, Edmund, Stacy, Quanise, Cora and Natalie voted for it. That's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. What did I say the first one was? One.
Your vote, Kay.
I don't, I don't have to vote unless it's to break a tie and if I voted one way, it would tie it. No one to break the tie. If I voted the other way, it means it just wins by more, so my vote pertinent. So it passes. So if there is any returned money that's not designated, it goes into the relief pot, right? I'm sure, I'm sure the recording will have the exact words. Okay. Okay. Cece, is there anything else under finance? That was sort of a new business under finance, but anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay. So now we come to new.
Kay, I'm sorry. I have to leave now.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Alma. We're going to the new business portion. And part of the new business, I know we may have other new business, but Quanise, you had something you wanted to bring up.
Yes. So thank you for allowing me to present this, present this to you all. One of the things I've been doing a lot is making sure that we're recognizing the land. So I wanted to let you all know that when we have services, just like when we start any type of meeting, people usually have land acknowledgements. The California Arts Council often starts their meetings with land acknowledgement. And if you don't know what a land acknowledgement is, is basically the formal statement that recognizes and respects indigenous people. And so I am putting forth a resolution to you all, so that I can, we can start all of our meetings acknowledging and honoring the first residents of what we now call Washington DC. So I move that the commission adopt the following as standing rule one. So standing rule one is that the Commission of the Arts and Humanities shall incorporate the land acknowledgement below as part of the Order of Business, following the call to order and establishment of a quorum and before the adoption of the Agenda for all regular, special and emergency meetings of the Commission on the Arts and Humanities to recognize the indigenous Nakachtenk and the Piscataway Peoples, who were the first residents of what would become Washington DC. The land acknowledgement shall read by the presiding officer or their designee as follows. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams and energy to make the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their wills, some were drawn to leave their distant homes in hope of a better life, and some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We stand on the ancestral lands of the Nakachtenk and the Piscataway People. We pay respect to their elders, past and present. Please take a moment to consider the many legacies of violence, displacement, migration and settlement that brings us here today. And please join us in uncovering such truths at any and all public events and to use such truths to guide the legacy of this arts commission.
So my mission. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second, second.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? I, I have one question for you, Quanise. It's very beautiful language. Did you write it yourself, or is it a particular land acknowledgement that just fill in the blanks with whoever, whatever tribes apply?
So native land. Yeah, native.
I'm just curious.
Native land.ca has scripted ones, but I use some of their language and incorporated my own language to make this statement.
Okay, great. I just wondered. Is there any question, Kay?
Sure.
Is there, I mean, I've seen that the, the Nakastin tribe was also here too. So I just, I wonder what, what the sources for the, were the, which tribes that are included in this? Or had you come across, I guess the question is, had you come across the Nakastin tribe as well?
I haven't. So I, I used the native land map and I put in. I haven't. So I used the Native Land map and I put in the zip code for DC, and it came up as Piscataway and Nkoch-Tank. So we, I mean, if, we can add that if that's part of the research that you've been doing as well.
We can add just the Nakasine. I mean, you know, I mean, it's, it's N-A-C-O-S-T-I-N-E. In Asha Musgrove's book, what city they, they talk about them at length. But if we could just add in them, just Nakasine, that's Anacostia, that's where that, the.
Nkoch-Tank.
Yeah. Yeah, they're sometimes called the Anacostias.
Yeah, they're sometimes called the Anacostias. So that's in the Nkoch-Tank.
The same, they're the same ones. Okay. Same ones. Same ones. All right, sounds good to me.
Thank you, Natalie.
Okay. So can we have a vote on this?
I just, I just also want to add, since we're talking about this, the Navajo Nation is currently the highest per capita rate of COVID-19 infections. And, you know, while we're recognizing indigenous communities, I just want to acknowledge that that is a community that is currently in need of support and attention.
We might have already about that. It's terrible. Okay, so let's vote on this. Natalie, do you want to vote yes or no?
Yes.
Cora? I'll come back, Quanise, yes. Derek? Derek, are you still with us?
I said yes.
Okay, great. Gretchen?
Yes.
Kimber?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Rona?
Yes.
Edmund?
Yes.
Chinadu?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Mariah?
I'm going to abstain on this.
Okay. Joseph?
I'm not going to abstain. I'm going to vote yes.
Okay, yes, great.
Jose?
Yes.
Cece?
Yes.
She's not here.
That's right. Thank you. Cora, are you back? Do you want to vote?
Cora, I thought I already voted.
I couldn't hear you. I didn't hear your vote.
Yes, I said yes.
Okay, good. Okay, Quanise, thank you for bringing this to our attention, and it passed. So we will include that in our future meetings.
Thank you.
And now, is there any other new business?
No, but I'd like to, I'd like, can I say, I'd like to thank Brian for his work on the budget. Brian, thank you. You've been doing really a very good job trying to get all the numbers together and bringing them to us. So I appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Can I, can I, I'd like to ask the question.
Sure.
On the new business, I guess. It's just a question. I really want to be kept aware of all of the hearings related to this commission. I've talked to a few people, and I know there's one coming up with the budget. And is this in front of committee or the whole? Or what committee do we come up under?
It's the committee of the whole.
Okay, so that's what I thought. All right. And anything else besides the budget?
The, you mean the, anything else coming up? You mean, is there anything else coming up that's major besides that?
The coast before the council that has anything to do with this, with this commission besides the budget here, or anything else?
No.
It, there are just two things each year. And one's a performance hearing, and one's a budget hearing. Hearing has already happened. That usually happens around February. And then the budget hearing usually happens in May.
Okay. And what about Heran's confirmation? Has that happened?
No, it was to happen before, but because of the virus, everything got postponed, so it has not.
There isn't an update yet.
There's no date, right?
There's no date yet, right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Kay, I want to really acknowledge the hard work. Because being part of the Public Art Committee and looking at all the hard work you and the team has done, it's incredible. And we all need to keep in mind that what the team does, those committees is proposed. And then, like we did very wisely today, we discuss and then approve, or not approve. So thank you for the hard working, because it's not easy. And thank you to everyone today for keeping the decorum and being able to be kind and gentle and respectful of each other. Because this is hard. I know we're all passionate. I know we are all in for helping everyone. And please do not get disheartened. And I'm meaning all the staff and the commissioners and the public. Because not everybody can always agree with everything we say or we do. And there might be some criticism, but know in your hearts, and Heran, that all of you and Kay are doing a great job. At least you have my total vote of confidence and the team. And there will be lots of neighbors here, but thank you for the commissioners coming together, all of us today. We can work on all of this in the details. Thank you so very much. Stay safe and healthy.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
So there had been some talk about making recommendations to the council concerning the mandates that are currently applied to our budget as it relates to programs like MCA as a cohort. What's the update on, on that?
Couldn't follow the question. Can you ask it again? I'm sorry, Joseph.
I can answer that.
Okay, go ahead. There was some noise. I just couldn't hear.
He was asking whether or not, well, Joseph, you are on the, on the grants committee, and we are going to be awaiting a draft from Carl, which will probably not happen until after the budget hearing, so we can review it to address the items that were talked about in the grants committee. One would be the mortgage and rent relief attached to FAB. The other would be the Nkoch conversation that we had. And then we still have to schedule a meeting with Humanities DC because they have new leadership. So those are the things that are in those three buckets. And that's where we left him in the grants committee.
We are not going to go to the budget hearing asking to be released from an obligation of, you know, almost a quarter percent of our grant budget going to 20 top organizations in DC.
I believe one of the things we suggested, one of the things we suggested was that Heran might include some of that discussion in her testimony. There you are.
Okay, so I don't understand. We're waiting on a draft from Carl, but Heran is still going to make that case?
Two different things. Carl is the one that would have to write the amendment to the legislation so that we can review it. And what we also said in our grants committee meeting was that there was a possibility that she, Heran, had mentioned this in her testimony on Friday.
And. Possibility, or she will?
Well, Carl is, Carl, you want to respond also, since I just mentioned your name?
Yeah, yes, Gretchen, thank you. I was told late last week that we want, we were contemplating making changes to our establishment statutes that regard the issues you raised. But previously, we've all discussed other changes that needed to be made to the legislation. When, when the council put this legislation together, they did so hurriedly. And because it was hurriedly done, there's certain ambiguities in the statutes that we agreed need to be cleaned up. For instance, when you go into the calculation, trying to figure out who gets what, the council gave a formula that they talked about the use of revenue, but they didn't say whether or not we were supposed to use gross or net revenue. So there's several pieces of our establishment statutes that we thought that we need to ask the council to correct. And the thought is that if we were going to the council, ask them to change our laws, that we go there one time with all the changes we needed to make, including these new changes that, again, that I learned about at the end of this past week. So I've begun to, to draft a bill that once it's finished, we will present to the council for its consideration. What I, what I, I've gotten notes from, I've gotten notes from a bunch of you all regarding what, the changes that need to be made. But what I would ask you all to do, if there are any other changes to the establishment statutes that you think we should bring to the council, we should do it all at one time. Because usually, when, when an agency gets, gets a bill passed, changing their establishment statutes, they don't, they don't go to them, they don't go to the council again two months later for something, or three months later. So if you've got, if you've got anything else you want changed in our establishment statutes, let me know. I'm working on it now with the goal of finishing a first draft within the next, next few days, business days.
And that's going to include recommending removing the Nkoch set aside?
It'll, it will include whatever you all tell me you want it to include. These are policy decisions that you, that, with, with Heran and our input, but these are policy decisions. You tell me what you want the bill to say, and that's how I'll draft it.
We have a grants committee meeting coming up on Tuesday, so why don't we just review everything specifically and get that to you on Tuesday?
That's a, that's a great idea.
I have some concerns about this. So from my perspective, it looks like everything goes through the grants committee, and everybody else in the commission is completely marginal and not heard at all in any of this. Why don't you just?
Invited to the meetings. It's an open.
I am not a member of the grants meeting. What I'm saying is that. Natalie, I hear you. Carl just said he wants anybody to, well, send it to him. The grants committee will talk, as we've talked before. But if you have specific suggestions, send it to Carl.
And I, and I think that's a good idea too, Gretchen. The only thing I would add respectfully, I would, I would request that if any of you commissioners do want to send to me suggested revisions, that you copy on that note, Heran and Kay, because, just because we're talking about revising our establishment statutes. And I, and I don't want to be working on this, on any suggested changes without at least Heran, you know, knowing what I'm working on and approving.
Exactly.
Carl, I have a follow up question.
What does, what does staff want? What are the changes that staff wants? Why don't we? Can we send that in writing? Please.
Yeah.
Yeah. I have a follow up question.
Sure, sure.
Quanise, Joseph?
So Carl mentioned policies versus the legislation. Could it be that we also, as a commission, set a policy that says if the MCA cohort gets their appropriate, supposing the budget, the BSA doesn't change, we can't get that changed, could we not make a policy that says the MCA cohort would no longer be eligible for any additional funds beyond their 23% mandate?
Yeah, yeah. The answer from my perspective is, is yes. You can, you all can make any policy that you like, as long as, as long as the policy doesn't run afoul of any existing and applicable law, statute, regulation, or I would argue, although we're not legally bound to follow the Office of Partnerships and Grant, Grant Management's Sourcebook, Grant Management Guidelines, they're a collection of best practices we should follow as well. So, yeah, the answer to your question, Joseph, is, is yes. You can make any recommendations you want, as long as they are in accordance with applicable law.
Let me ask right now.
If we, I just have another.
Right now, there's just one other thing.
Hold on, Kay, I still, Kay, Kay, I don't want to lose track of this thought. So Carl, for the draft legislation that you're writing, what would be our deadline for a decision made by council to affect FY21 if we, if we were to change the BSA to remove MCA?
The, I don't know that fully. Could you ask a question again? I'm sorry, Joseph.
Yeah, yeah. So, so if, if we wanted to free up more funding to go to other grants programs, or even to relief, that would require us to find more money. And I think a way for us to get more money is to remove the 23% mandate that says that amount of our, our grants budget will go to the top 20 organizations in DC. So my question to you is, what would be our timeline to get something like that passed and in effect for FY21?
Wow, that's, that's a question that, that's really difficult for me to answer right now, because so much of, of the answer to that question, so much of the answer to that question depends on, on the council and their schedule. Hypothetically, we say after I, I get the full list of the changes that, that you all want after I speak to Gretchen and the grants committee next week, and then receive from you all, the other commissioners, we put a bill together, we, we then have to send it to the Office of the Attorney General. They've got to conduct a legal sufficiency review. That's just a requirement for every, every piece of, every bill that is presented to the council. That'll probably take a couple of, a week or two. I don't know what the schedule look like. But OAG then comes back. They deem it to be legally sufficient. We still also, and we can do this part concurrently, we still have to get a fiscal impact statement from the Office of the Chief Financial Officer. What, what that statement does is tell the world, tell the council, if you pass this bill, this is what it will cost. That probably could be done a lot quicker than the two, the one or two weeks that it would take OAG to do the legal sufficiency review. But then, once that's all together, we put that together in a package, presented to the Chairman of the Council Committee of the Whole. But, but how quickly they would then jump on that and actually move on it, there's, there's no telling. There's, and I'll just end with this, because I know I'm going on it. There's a way you can, you can ask for permanent legislation. It takes a lot longer. You could also ask for an emergency treatment of a bill. It's shorter, but it doesn't give permanent protection. We can talk about all of that offline. But the bottom line answer to your question, Joseph, is it's, it's real, it's almost impossible right now for me to tell how long it'll take. But it'll take, I can say with certainty, it'll take weeks, at least three weeks. And that's optimistic.
Can I make a suggestion? Can I make a suggestion for Joseph and Kay? You know, it seems like maybe, you know, one of the committees, like perhaps the Bylaws Committee could sort of go at this and sort of like system it. Because this is sort of, this is really important, what you're saying, Carl. And this whole topic is really important and deserves more than just tacked on the end of the, of the full commission meeting treatment. So, you know, Joseph, what do you think about having the Bylaws Committee convene and sort of discuss what changes need to be made, recommended changes need to be made with the?
Natalie, with all respect, I don't think it's to be decided that way for you to, I mean, for Joseph to decide to take that on as part of Bylaws Committee. I've been waiting for.
Would you, Kay, would you make an ad hoc committee? Would you establish an ad hoc committee, Kay, that we could join?
I'm concerned about the ad hoc committees because they don't mean anything, obviously, because we've already had ad hoc committees.
That's not true. An ad hoc committee.
Okay. I mean, I'm not going to sit, I'm not going to hear an argument about this.
Natalie, an ad hoc committee is put together for express purpose, and then they come with one recommendation from that. What I think is that if there's legislation going to the council for change, that we should all agree on it. All of us should agree on it. And I've been waiting actually to see what Carl drafted. There's so many nuances to this. There's definitely got to be some sort of body that reviews what goes forward, and we all need to come together. I will appoint some people, and I hear you, Joseph. I know who's interested. Probably everyone's interested. I agree that this is the next big important thing that we're going to do. I don't want to be put on the spot at the end of this meeting to say how it's going to be going forward, but I promise to involve the whole commission in this.
Okay, respectfully, we, we did have an ad hoc committee, and none of the recommendations were, were.
Natalie, there has not.
There weren't even questions even come out of the, so, so my thing.
You have not yet. Respectfully, with all respect, you have not presented a proposal from your ad hoc committee on the commission that was voted on by the ad hoc committee on the commission.
We created a huddle to deal with this crisis, Kay. All you did, all we got was bad information that turned out to be wrong. So, so again, and all the, all the recommendations were completely ignored. And so what I see happening right here is that, you know, again, so I would agree with you, Kay. So this is what I'm trying to avoid, is that Carl gets. So this is what I'm trying to avoid, is that Carl gets 18 different recommendations coming from 18 different people. And so that's.
Each one might, one recommendation might represent eight people, and one might represent one person. I'd like to think about this, but as far as the ad hoc, we're all waiting for the ad hoc committee to make a specific voted upon recommendation for this body. That hasn't happened. The huddle and the ad hoc committee were not the same things. They were two different things. The ad hoc committee is official. The huddle was not. So they're getting confused.
Either way, either way, Kay, you felt compelled to just ignore the recommendations of people who are, you know, who are members of this commission. So this is what I'm saying, is that I don't want sort of handpicking. So to me, it looks like you prefer that everything goes through grants, and so everybody else on this commission ends up being marginal to whatever process. This is a very important process. I see, like, really, this will just, as far as I'm concerned, independence has been quite chaotic. And, you know, and so there's a whole lot of things that need to be set up as far as checks and balances. We've paused agencies. We've done all kinds of things without any official sanction. And so it's going to be really important that whatever happens next, and however the law is amended, that it's representative of everybody, and that people have an opportunity, and there's a deliberative, deliberative body that goes through, and not just literally the one handpicked by you.
I think Kay just said that. She said it would have represented the entire commission. Of the commission. You just said that. So that means the whole commission has to agree to it before it goes forward.
Okay, so I'm saying, you just said you would let, the Grants Committee would let everybody know. And, you know, and that's the way things have gone in this commission, and this is like that.
It has not, Natalie, because there are, there's more than the Grants Committee in this commission. We do what we're supposed to do. There's the Finance Committee. There's the Public Art Committee. There's the Bylaws Committee. There are other committees. So it's not.
So, you know, so again, if we're looking at the committees that have already been established, if you're looking at the bylaws, whatever happens, whatever, however the law is restructured, will impact the way that this commission is, and bylaws are moving forward. So I'm suggesting, Kay, and you can ignore me the way that you've been ignoring me for the last three months, I am suggesting that the.
Well, it's not necessary, Quanise.
You're not the same person. This is Natalie Hopkinson.
That's not fair. That's not fair, Natalie.
We are 50 minutes over, and it seems like we are not being as productive at this moment. So what, maybe we need to just table this until our next meeting?
Yes, yeah.
Doing a committee.
I'm going to just leave it. I've said that I will address it, and that everybody on the commission will have the opportunity to vote upon it before it goes forward. And that has to be the last word. I'm going to end this meeting. The meeting is adjourned at 5:53, 6:53.
You have to call a vote, Kay. We're still discussing.
A vote on what?
The meeting.
A vote on what?
Excuse me, a vote on what?
Close the meeting. We're closing the meeting.
She's, she's called for adjournment. I don't, we don't need to vote.
We don't need to vote on adjournment.
I feel like we were still in the middle of a discussion, but, you know. Because you decided not to be?
Well, because clearly, if the meeting's adjourned, we must move forward.
People were, this is it. Yeah, yeah, Joseph, we're calling the meeting. The meeting is, it's time for it to be over. It's supposed to be over at 5:30. It's 6:54. The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.